Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board Meeting of August ninth, 2022. I have a few opening comments regarding the meeting. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. Number one, state your name and address. Number two, approach the center table here and either sit, stand, or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance, including those remotely. The Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask to anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. Is anyone? All right. Thank you. All right. Our first item for the evening, our approval not required plans. I think there was one in the...
Yep, it was this one on Scott Road here, Sima.
Do you want to bring that up on the screen?
Probably the color one, Mike, I assume.
I think it might be, if you look at the locusts first, so you can see the existing, and compare with the colored magic marker version.
All right. Hold on one second. Let me...
And Mr. Gagnon, the owner.
Hi.
That's okay.
Sixty Scott Road.
Yes.
And I'm Justin Salish. I'm seventy Scott Road.
Excellent. Okay. So if you look up on the screen, you can see the locusts.
The highlighted one is yours, Mr. Gagnon, sixty.
Okay. So up here on the screen, the yellow encased area is sixty Scott Road, my property, and the area just to the left, the larger parcel, is owned by seventy Scott Road, Jessica here. So about a year and a half or two years ago, I purchased sixty Scott Road at auction from the town, and, you know, other than being a little bit rundown and needing a lot of work, it had Title V issues a little bit, so I was able to overcome them enough to get it livable and things functioning properly. But the border health urged me to be putting a replacement septic system on like the fast lane, but the problem is the septic system is behind the house. So Scott Road is to the north, right? And the septic system is behind the house, so there's only a very small sliver of land and no area to really put in a proper septic system that's there. So I approached Jessica and talked to her about shaving off a sliver of land there, well, not really a sliver, a parcel of land there that would allow me to do a septic system expansion. And if you look at the way the yards are structured, right where the new lot line would be that cuts down to the left and the back, so the lower section now is what would become mine, that's yellow encased, and it's hers now, but right where the left lot line would be, that new lot line right there, there's like a stone wall and a three-foot grade drop. So like, she's like, I've owned that house for a few years now, and I haven't stepped foot over there, so it really looks like that parcel should be sixty Scott Road and this parcel should be seventy Scott Road. But anyway, so that's what we're here for approval for in a nutshell, and, you know, hoping you guys are easy on us.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Pretty straightforward, pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, it's making the lot more conforming. It's still, it's almost got, it almost have the hundred-foot frontage for the zone, so it'll be good.
I missed that. Can you repeat that?
I said it almost has the hundred-foot frontage for the...
It's a little less than that. Currently, right now, it's sixty, and I think we get another, yeah, almost maybe eighty-five-ish. Yeah, yeah.
Right, so you're getting less snug.
Yeah, and correct, it's less non-conforming.
Yeah. It does give the left side lot line the conforming setback of fifteen feet.
Yep.
So it's really good for me, and it doesn't hurt seventy Scott Road much.
And the parcel size is now compliant because it's twelve-five for the lot, so now it's above that, so it makes it more compliant.
Yep.
Any questions by the board regarding...
Straightforward.
Do you have the Mylar in the original?
I do. It's on the table. Do you want to pass it around and sign, or what's your druthers?
If you want, if you want to just open up the front copy in the Mylar and just leave it on that table, we'll go over there and sign it.
Leave it on, okay, on the Mylar.
The Mylar and one copy, one clean copy.
Okay, got it. I'll just...
You can leave them right there, and we'll come over and sign it. Do you have a pen, Mike?
And what we can do is...
Was there a pen along with that?
The magic...
See a pen?
If you want to sign it first, we'll go up in shifts and sign it.
We'll have a special pen.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So where, let me see here. Is that a good spot? It should be, oh, here, okay, got it. Oh, perfect.
Either that, or you can even put it next to you, whatever's easier. I just figured, last time we...
Yeah, I know, it'd be great.
And those you keep?
One table and another.
Might be easier getting them.
So after we've been signed, we're done? I'll do that now, yeah? Appreciate it, and thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
And just one more.
One more. Alin, you want to do that, your closest?
Shouldn't we take both, I take both copies, so do I leave one? Leave that with you? Thank you. That's it? That's it, man? I'd like to thank the board. Appreciate it. Have a nice afternoon.
Good luck, guys.
All right, on to the next segment on our agenda. We have minor site plan and special permit modifications for which there are none. And then we're into public hearings. And the first item we have is we had a public hearing for a site plan for Pittsburgh Land Property Owner LLC for an industrial warehouse and distribution center at Zero Crawford Street for a request to continue, and it's not to August twenty-third, it's going to be to our September...
September twentieth?
Oh, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven.
September twenty-seventh. So we just have to have a motion on that?
Just in case anyone's here for that, just because it's a big project, it's, we're just waiting for the peer review study of the traffic report, and if any of the board members saw it, it's insanely long, so, as Mike said, the summary page is helpful. I make a motion to continue to our September meeting.
A motion's been made?
Seconded.
With the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Just one note on that, I got a call from the planning director in Lemonster this morning. They had a meeting earlier today with Hannigan Engineering and GFI. They, GFI is agreeing to sort of widen the scope of the traffic impact study in order to include several intersections in Lemonster that the city of Lemonster wanted done.
Did anyone remind them of how nice their email was to us about the Starbucks property?
Afterwards, Paul.
All right. Next item, we have, whether the applicant is here, under the Scenic Road Act, Mr. Lopez before eighteen Alpine's Road for revised driveway.
Hi, good afternoon.
All right.
Hello, it's Ernesto Lopez, and she, I hope you meet me with my English, because it's really bad.
Okay.
So we recently, we bought the house in January, and he recently cleaned the front, so there's a rock wall, and he recently cleaned it, so he rebuilt the rock wall.
Right, right there, right, up on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah. This is what I'm making.
He just rebuilt it to make it look cleaner.
Okay. And I see that there was a site plan from twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen.
Right, but the building permit wasn't until twenty twenty-one.
This is before.
Right, that's before. So to be honest, there really wasn't much...
Yeah, that's a good picture of it, yeah.
You know, like a pile of rubble.
Can you bring up the...
Because I remember going up there when the building permit application came in.
Yeah. This one?
Yep.
That's what you're looking at?
Yes. Yep. So just taking a look at the plan. So on the plan, there's just a, it seems where the driveway is, that there's the stone wall in front of the driveway.
Yeah.
So I'm going to take, I'm assuming you'd want, we're just here to say that the, that the stone wall has been relocated to the, in front of the front yard from the driveway and to the existing driveway width.
I mean, I suppose it's realistically just a question of, are we, are we okay with the fact of the way the rock wall looks now, knowing what it looked like before, because it's...
Yes, that's what I'm saying, is that we're speaking from the plan that's here, which shows the rock wall in front of the driveway.
Right, it's on the other side of the house.
We permission to move the drive, so we would be seeking to, the applicant will be seeking for us just to approve that those stones shown on that plan are now relocated in the front yard, in front of the front yard and not in front of the driveway, and that is the board satisfied with the present driveway width?
Yeah, so let me go back...
As is conditions.
Yeah, let me go back to, hold on, that's the wrong one. This one. So there's not really one that shows the actual driveway entrance, but the driveway width is, it's a...
Yeah, the driveway is okay.
Two cars wide, one car wide?
Yeah, no, it's okay.
It's two cars wide.
Two cars wide?
But didn't change after though, we made sure of it, because the grass started at the same point. All of the work is to get approval is the other side, which looks the same as the old picture, and rebuild the new wall, so it's the same as the other side.
Yes, so under the Scenic Road Act, the why, the reason why you're here is just moving of the stones to create the driveway. So we're just here to say whether we just approve the movement of the stones to the existing conditions.
Yep. Yeah, I can word that when we get to it. I don't have a problem with it.
Does any board member have any questions?
I'm all set.
No. And this is a, it is a public hearing, does, is there anybody in the public here in the audience that has any comments on this application?
I know DPW, the commissioner, Nick Erickson, is on the list of attendees. I don't know whether he had something.
Nick, if you have anything, you're welcome to speak. There's nothing I have to do, it's just he's a panelist, so.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. I just did want to mention briefly, I sent a few comments to Mike. When the applicant did this work, they damaged the roadway pretty significantly. They dragged a trailer without a wheel on it essentially from Westminster Street all the way up to the residents on Alpine Road, including along the entire length of the new pavement. So there's a nice deep one-to-two-inch gouge in the pavement that we just installed last summer. In addition to that, by excavating along the shoulder, the roadway, they undermined the new pavement and collapsed it in several areas. And on top of that, they operated a backhoe with leaking hydraulic fluid lines and pretty heavily stained the pavement, which I think is visible in a few of the pictures that were just up on the screen. So I'll be honest, I'm not too happy about that. The city has a very, very limited paving budget every year, and to see the road so unnecessarily destroyed without any sort of consideration or care from the applicant here is unacceptable, in my opinion. That's, I don't really know how to proceed, because I don't know what we have as far as legal ability to recover any sort of damages that were caused, but in my opinion, it's an egregious act and should be considered by the board.
Thank you, Nick.
Go ahead.
He didn't do it with no intention of damaging the road. He wouldn't want to do that on his own road either, so once he noticed that he created that damage, he really stopped and put it away. And when he noticed there, she did say to the man that he would do what he could possible to fix it, because he also didn't want to see the road like that either. He also tried to take out the smudges on the street, but obviously wasn't able to, but he also mentioned to him that he, he didn't need to do that on purpose, and that was a whole other story. It wasn't a purpose act at all. He was just trying to make his house better. And he explained really well to the guy, like every process that he did, like no intention of...
Thank you.
Oh, my dad was very, like, took it back because the way he approached him, very, like...
He was listening to me because I was explaining how this happened, and he was listening. He said, like, I'm a vandal, like...
Like vandalizing, like saying things that weren't true, like it was just an accident act, but he was like, you know, like seeing my number, like, no, he did this on purpose.
Okay, I understand. Yep.
All he's trying to say is it wasn't on purpose at all.
Understood.
Definitely. I definitely understand.
So this is a application underneath the Scenic Road Act, it's not a special permit, so our scope is limited to the wall.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, obviously, if the DPW needs to look into any recourse, they're going to have to look through this, or not through this board, so just particularly because of the limited control we have with the Scenic Road Act. So I certainly get what Nick's saying, and it's disappointing when something like that happens, but...
And I don't really know what, as Nick mentioned, what the recourse would be in order to make effectuate or repair.
Right, what would even be the solution? I have no idea. But anyway, the actual relocation of the wall, I'm fine with.
Is there anybody else in the audience or remotely has any comments?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second that motion?
A motion's been made with the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the relocation of the stone wall under the Scenic Road Act.
For the existing condition?
Right.
Second that motion?
A motion's been made with the second. Roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. Laura?
Aye.
All right. All set. Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I know, Amanda.
I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, Amanda's there?
Yep.
Amanda. I heard an aye for Amanda. All right, Amanda, thank you. Thank you. I couldn't see on the screen, I couldn't, because I don't think Alex is not here, correct? Is that the only board member absent? All right. I apologize, Amanda.
Yep. You're all set, guys. Thank you. Yep, you're all set. Thank you.
Oh, no, all set.
Thank you.
If there is something you think you can do to solve that, I suggest you contact the DPW. If there is something you can do to rectify the damage you caused, I suggest you look into it and contact the DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And next item on our agenda is a special permit and site plan review by Jeanson Builders, Zero Summer Street for a twenty-four unit multifamily.
All right. Probably page three, or you want the clean sheet, page four of your, of your plans?
Yeah, page, page three looks great to start. I'm going to give you guys each a small handout, if that's all right, to guide us through our discussions.
Sure.
And when the board's ready, I'll introduce myself and the applicant.
So try to put up on the screen any of the applications you...
Yeah, I do.
...seriously submitted. No, this is good.
Oh.
It said, he's giving us the paper copies, it said as we go through, we'll show them up on the screen. Unless this changes.
There's known, I mean, well, Amanda's virtual, but aside from, it's still got to put up there for Amanda, but...
It's just a hard copy of the...
Oh, no, I take that back, we do have a few attendees now. We didn't a little while ago.
All right, when you're ready, please present.
I am ready. My name is Seth Donahoe, I'm here from Dillis and Roy Civil Design Group. We are civil engineers, land surveyors, and environmental consultants. With me tonight is Mickey Jeanson of Jeanson Builders Contracting, and as you mentioned, we have put forward an application for a special permit and site plan review related to the development of a twenty-four unit multifamily building at Zero Summer Street. Our property is located on the easterly side of Summer Street, it is at the Beacon Street intersection, and it is just over one acre, forty-three thousand five hundred eighty-nine square feet. It is essentially almost entirely a paved parking lot at this time. It has multiple curb cuts onto Beacon Street, and the pavement continues onto the property to the east, which is known as Seventy-Six Summer Street. It is currently a medical building with a very large parking area on its own. We are proposing to construct a new building within the parking area. On the first sheet of your handout, we have highlighted in gray, that's the extent of the existing pavement on our site, and in the green is the small existing landscaped areas on the site.
Seth, let me just, these, I know they're not colored, but are they in order with what you have up there? So this, what's on the screen right now is sheet one, right?
Yep, so I...
I only ask because we have people virtually who aren't looking at these sheets.
Quite all right, so sheet one, or C one-point-one would be the sheet that we're talking about right now.
Okay.
And there are some arrows calling out the existing paved parking area, and you can see there's a small island at the bottom of the screen. That's, that's the limits of the landscaped area on the inside of the site, and then along Beacon and Summer Street, there's a fairly small landscaped area as well, although the Summer Street section does have some nice mature trees and better-looking trees on it. Beacon Street has a mix of Norway maples, locusts, and some understory vegetation on it as well. So I'll get into that a little bit later in our presentation tonight. The next sheet I'm going to go to, that's in your colored handout, is sheet C four-point-oh. That shows the proposed building location, much of the proposed infrastructure, and the slight proposed grading changes that we're incorporating in the project. As I mentioned, the site is almost entirely paved right now, has over thirty-five thousand square feet of impervious area. We're proposing to reduce that by approximately ten thousand square feet, so there'll be more green space, more open space on the site as the result of this project. One of the other key benefits that's incorporated in this, there is an existing curb cut right at the Beacon-Summer Street intersection, and that's used by a lot of people to cut through the site. The alignment of that intersection is not really beneficial to either Beacon Street or Summer Street, so we are proposing to relocate that further up Beacon Street, approximately a hundred and sixty-five feet up Beacon Street, and we'll be providing a full twenty-four width paved access aisle through to Seventy-Six Summer Street, and also allowing for vehicle circulation through our own site with the parking area that you see, what I'd call in front of our proposed building. You can see that we have some infiltration chambers incorporated in that, that is near the Summer Street area. Presently, right now, the storm water on the site essentially flows via sheet flow, so across the land. It is caught by improvised paved throat along Summer Street and conveyed into a series of catch basins there. We're proposing to infiltrate the majority of our runoff on site, providing a small emergency overflow area out to the existing infrastructure in Beacon Street. The net result of our project is that we will be improving the storm water flows from the site, providing treatment and infiltration on our own site. One of the other things that we came across in our planning is that the sewer service from Seventy-Six Summer Street, so that is the property to the east, the larger building I spoke about, is actually off of the plan view, but you can see a line going right through the middle of our site. That's an existing combined sewer, so it's conveying both storm water and sewage from the existing building into the sewage system. I'm sure the board's dealt with it before, our DP's not too keen on that, nor is the city, I imagine, so that's something that we will be remedying as part of this process. We will be intercepting that and catching the sewage, abandoning the storm water portion of that, and so only sewage will be going into the sewer at that point.
Even at Crown Point?
Correct, yes. So to the best of our knowledge, it's an older building, so if there's any internal hookups that we're not aware of, that's beyond the scope of our project, but we're eliminating the catch basins that are within Crown Point's parking lot and switching those to sewer manholes only.
Okay.
So the project is presently proposed for a total of twenty-four units. It's nineteen one-bedroom units, five two-bedroom units. The zoning ordinance would require us to provide twenty-seven onsite parking spaces. We're exceeding that with a total of thirty-one proposed onsite parking spaces. We have asked for relief to go to the twenty-four units. The zoning ordinance has a calculation where we would take total lot area, divide that by twenty-five hundred square feet, that would equate to seventeen units. So because we can provide additional parking onsite beyond what is normally required, we are asking for relief to go to that twenty-four units, and that twenty-four units allows us to do a mix of unit sizes within the building as well, so we can get within the same footprint that would be there for the seventeen units, we can actually provide a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom units within the same building. As I touched on briefly, there is an increase in green space and improved streetscape associated with this. The Summer Street corridor does have some nice trees along it, we'll actually be widening that area, so there'll be more landscaping along that area. The Beacon Street area, well, it does have some trees, some of them are in... The Beacon Street area, well, it does have some trees, some of them are invasive plants. There's a landscape sheet within your package, and we're proposing to enhance that landscaping all along the Beacon Street area. There'll essentially be a continuous line of native landscaping trees all along that tree as a result of this project. That is what we are doing in a nutshell. I know there's a lot of information presented to the board. I'm happy to go into as much detail on any of the individual sheets in your package, any of the items in your application package, or address any specific questions the board has at this time.
We did get, I think, just a few minutes ago, we got comments from Commissioner Erickson, who's also on the call. So I know you probably haven't seen them yet, but they'll, most of them look pretty straightforward. It's just something that we'll have to condition on, your proper explanation, or adding, or determination, like, you know... Actually, Nick, if you want to speak, instead of me going over what you wrote, you might want to just give a brief summary.
Sure, that'd be fine. Thanks Paul. So overall, I think this is a great project as proposed. It does solve a number of issues with this property. One being the curb cut at the intersection of Beacon and Summer, and then the second being that catch basin that's tied into the sewer. So both of those are being addressed, which is awesome. The biggest concern that I had, and it's tough to see on the plans, because there's no inset that kind of shows up a blown-up version. But right where the overflow from the infiltration galley is tied into the stormwater system, it looks like it's, the note says, "Replace existing catch basin with a catch basin and a drain manhole." I just want to make sure that that means the system will be tied into the drain manhole. Drain manhole will be piped over to the drain manhole across the street, and that catch basin will be kind of replumbed into the new drain manhole that's going in. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Your interpretation is exactly what was intended with that.
Okay, great. And I just want to make sure of that, just because, you know, we do our best to clean out the catch basins when the sump is half-full or greater. But oftentimes, it just, we have seven thousand catch basins in the city, and one guy that goes around to clean them all. So a lot of times, it just doesn't happen in a timely enough fashion. And I'd hate to see that overflow from the stormwater underground system blocked up with sediment debris, and that causes some issues, you know, further upstream. So, good to hear that. And that's really my only, my only major comment. There's new pavement on Summer and Beacon, obviously, so if we're doing any excavation within the new pavement areas, we'll need to do either a good patch, or come up with something, just to make sure that everything looks as good as it does pre-construction. And then the other thing we gotta make sure of, I don't think it's listed in my comments, but just during construction, we want to protect the pavement on Summer Street. So, you know, whatever that takes to make sure that trucks aren't tracking sediment offsite, or, you know, heavy equipment isn't damaging the pavement out there. You know, I think we just gotta be a little bit mindful of that.
Thank you Nick. Thank you for the comments. If it's alright with the board, I'll just dive in on a couple of those things. Just basically in affirmation of what's been said. One of the issues that we came into early in the planning process for this project was that Summer Street had been recently paved. And essentially, there was a moratorium for providing utilities off that. So all of our utility cuts are actually off of Beacon Street, being a lesser-traveled road. It's much easier for us to maintain and replace the pavement within those few areas that we do have utility cuts there. And then, as far as the utility sizing, that was initially a concern as well. Sufficient utilities are located within Beacon Street, too, so there's no concerns related to that.
Okay. No, I think you've got everything mostly covered. Obviously, there'll be water and sewer connection permits required. For the water system, obviously, we'll need to meet Water Division standards for the tie-in and whatnot. And then on the sewer side, typically, they like to see flow calculations for the proposed building. And because we're a combined system, we have to follow certain regulations at the state and federal level. And one of those is the II fee requirement. So if the flows exceed a certain threshold, then there's gonna be an II fee required on top of just the standard sewer connection permit fee. But that's nothing that needs to be taken care of now. It can be conditioned with a permit. You know, whenever you guys have a chance, send those flow calculations over. We typically use the Title V sizing calculation methodology. And then we can calculate whether there's gonna need to be an II fee assessed or not.
There'll also be a curb cut permit through DPW for the driveway.
Yes, correct. Thank you Paula.
I've got that one solid.
We had talked in the past, when I met you guys, I don't know, a couple of months ago, we had talked about, you weren't sure at the time if there was any fencing? Is there any fencing?
We actually have not proposed any fencing at this time. Strictly landscaping.
Perfect. Just know that if you do change that, to come back with a revised site plan, because we want to see what kind of fencing is where it would be.
I'll actually take that back. There is fencing around the dumpster, so there's screening around the dumpster, which is-
Is that on one of your-
It is, so I didn't want to misspeak, so-
Hold on, I got them all up right here. Let's see. Okay, we'll get to public comment in one second.
And are these proposed to be rental units or condominiums? Rental units, okay.
No, that's the ramp.
C-3.0 has specifics to the dumpster pad.
Okay, so there's no, there's no, there's no breakouts like there are on these pages of the-
It just calls for a privacy fence, yeah.
Where's the dumpster pad?
It's in that dead end section, right? It's right behind the building?
So behind the building, we're proposing emergency access only there, as that was one of our takeaways. We attended an Economic Development Committee meeting early on in this process, the fire department. While we were able to keep everything, what I'd call in the front, the Summer Street side of the building, they did want to have provisions for the access to the rear of the building. And there's a small screen dumpster area removed from the lot lines and behind that building there.
Is that within the, was that next to the abutter?
It would be westerly of the abutter, existing building number nineteen to twenty-one Beacon Street.
Okay, just trying to-
If it does end up there, then it certainly needs to be decorative fencing. Most likely vinyl fencing of some sort.
So that's actually the call-out on sheet C-3.0. It calls for vinyl fencing with a full enclosure on it. But we would certainly, if the board felt like something different was needed, we'd certainly be happy to discuss that.
So, will one of the policies allow pets, or not? Pets?
Probably not, no.
Okay.
So we would permit it that you won't allow them, because we would need a pet relief area and all that sort of stuff?
So that's the concern there, that if you do allow, particularly, you know, pets that need to go outside, that there be an area for them? So that it's not on the public way, or neighbors, or sidewalks, or that you provide for that? Is there any other, any other outdoor space provided for the tenants at all, or is it just completely interior and parking?
Interior parking?
She's saying, is there any gathering space or anything other than parking?
Right, any gathering space, recreation space, or gathering spot, or is it just solely, all they have is the apartment units? Is there any storage planned?
Just the grass, if they want to go walk out.
Any storage areas? Any, and maybe make some provisions for bicycles, bicycle racks?
Yeah, we could certainly incorporate a bicycle rack. Behind the dumpster would be an ideal place. We do have a walkway around the entirety of the building. There's accessible routes in and out of the building. If the board likes the bikes in the back, we can certainly do that, or we can do something along Beacon Street, too. There's a grassed area that could maintain a bike rack in that area as well.
There's no basement area? First, second, third floor, no basement at all?
No basement.
Seth, have you built apartment buildings similar to this in other communities?
So Mr. Jeanson has some experience with this style buildings. I'll point you to the last two pages of the handout that we gave you. Those have some renderings of the building style that's being proposed.
Have you built an apartment building like this one in other communities?
I haven't built one like this one.
No?
So-
I'm just kind of wondering, you know, this site that you're thinking about building on, on the corner of Summer and Beacon, that really is one choice location in town. It's high visibility, it's kind of a gateway to the downtown. And I'm just wondering why a developer comes in and wants to put a building on that lot that's seventy feet by a hundred and nineteen feet, flopped on the back of the lot, with a corridor down the middle of each floor, with doors to the left and right, almost like a dormitory, or a super eight. There seems to be so much more you could do with that lot. You know, I envision on that lot, some beautiful townhouses, that are architecturally pleasing, two levels, possibly even one or two car garages. Something that's gonna add a lot of value, you know, to the neighborhood. People will want to live there. You know, I have a lot of trouble warming up. I appreciate the fact that you actually put a mansard roof on it, because there were two other buildings in the area that have mansard roofs. But I just have a feeling that there's so much more that could be done with that lot to make it a showplace, rather than putting this box on it with no storage, no sellers. You walk into that corridor at eleven o'clock at night, you don't know who's gonna be in the long hallway, or who's gonna pop their head open in a doorway. Why did you choose this design, and why not put something a little more appealing on that lot?
I think the architect actually put a lot of thought into the building. I know he looked at many of the surrounding buildings, and as you mentioned, the roof lines-
Let me stop you there for a second Seth. There are other apartment buildings in the neighborhood. They're mostly on Beacon Street, and you cited them in your application. But when you drive through that neighborhood, when you drive up Beacon Street and the entire neighborhood, Atlantic Avenue, Lawrence Street, Bluff Ave, Goodrich, you do not get any impression that that's a multifamily neighborhood. And the one building that you cited in your application that's a seven-family on Beacon Street, that building is actually two units. It's two buildings. There's one, one building is a five-unit, and one building is a two-unit. And if you drive right up to that building and look at it straight on, you would be hard-pressed to even notice that it's a multifamily. So you're proposing a twenty-four-unit box on this property, and when there's so much more potential for that site. And I'm having a little trouble warming up to the looks of that particular building on the site. And my question to you is, why didn't you go a little bit further in those plans and ask the architect to draw up some nice little townhouses?
You know, I'll point back. This started with a meeting with the Economic Development Committee, probably in April-ish, April or May. The feedback that we received there, it differed from yours, and I completely respect your opinion, but we really weren't pushed in that direction to look at a townhome configuration.
Would you consider it?
Even look at a garage. We're pretty far down the road. It's a tough time to do an about-face. Hundred percent, we're here to get your feedback and incorporate what we can. But to do a full site change like that at this point in the process, it's very difficult.
Well, I do want to tell you, this is the first time I've laid eyes on it, and I've seen the project. And like I said, I've got a little bit of concern, and a little bit of a problem with that building of twenty-four units. And then you come to the city and you ask for nine extra on the project.
Well, it's seven extra in essentially the same building. And I'll point out, the building, the zoning setbacks are essentially absent. It's in the Neighborhood Business District. So we're meeting and exceeding them in this case.
Oh, I understand. I mean, the project has everything going for it in the right directions, and everything is met. My objection is, the overall character and looks, the ambiance of the project. I think the neighborhood deserves more, and I think the city itself could deserve more. A better-looking, more appealing project.
Well, we are here to work with you, and part of the difficult situation that we're in is, there's seven board members. I hear some abutters behind me. My opinion differs from Mr. Jeanson. I don't know if we're ever gonna all be a hundred percent in agreement on a subjective thing like the aesthetics, or the look, or anything like that. But I'd love to get some constructive feedback, and I've certainly heard from you that you prefer maybe a multi-layout, a multi-building layout, or some type of breezeways between things, perhaps lower density. And I'll point out, when we go to, we did give you some examples of multifamilies that are in the neighborhood, and that's a subjective thing, too. I actually drove down the street, and I said, there's multiple entrances to almost every house that I'm going up here. And I respect that there are older homes that have that, and a lot of them are multifamilies. But in the case of thirty-two Beacon Street, we're looking at a lot area per dwelling unit on that lot of one thousand two hundred seventy-eight square feet. I mean, that's a densely developed site. Same thing, twenty-eight Beacon Street, that has a lot area of two thousand two hundred twenty-nine square feet per unit. We're splitting the difference with our proposal. Even when we asked for some relief, we're at one thousand eight hundred sixteen square feet per unit.
No, I have no problem with any of those things at all. My only issue is the overall character and look of the complex. That's my overall beef, really.
We do have one, there was, because it's on topic, and I know the abutters, I'm sure, want to say something. But because it's on topic of what Peter did say, we did have one email that says, from Corey Donley, it says, "Mr. O'Hara, I support development in the city, however, I'm opposed to a box being built on Beacon Summer Street. I would like to see a building with character as Beacon..." Hold on, I gotta move my thing here. Nine million windows open on... "...as Beacon Street and Atlantic Street show character. Something aesthetically pleasing would fit much better. Please take my email into consideration for the meeting tonight." The one thing that originally came to mind, and I don't know, like, Seth, I know what you're saying, that it's hard to get everyone to agree that something looks perfectly nice. But the one thing that I thought most importantly might be to break up that front straight line. You know, if you had the look of, you know, maybe cutting the building to force, and you have
Staggered?
A five-foot, you know, bump out, a five-foot, something like that. You know, you have it staggered on the front, so you have much more appeal. And maybe change the, you know, I can't remember, I don't think it was yours, but that Development Review Board meeting, which I was at, it was either this project, or it was another one, where they showed us properties in Cambridge. Was that this, or was that? Showed us these, anyway.
We had a very contemporary one, which we-
Right, yes, that was this one.
And it was staggered.
And they showed multiple color, not multiple, multiple types of siding. Maybe you could do something like that to show, you know, break it up a little bit, and show something with a little more character and appeal. The other thing that that might do is, if you stagger, let's say you stagger the middle part of the building, you have, you know, the two sides, and you stagger the middle part of the building forward, you could tuck the dumpster behind the building and put, secure, put the fencing behind the building to keep it away from the abutters' properties, too. So it kind of, it would kind of solve two things. The dumpster would be tucked into the building, they could still get around and pick it up, but also keep it as kind of like part of the building envelope. Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely.
Because I think, my guess is, that's gonna be one of the big things, is the dumpster being behind the building, you know, near those properties, so...
We also do want mentioning about like the bicycles and other modes of transportation. We want to make sure there's good access for pedestrians, as well as cycling, as well as the vehicles, traffic, so... And as Pete and Paul mentioned, also, you know, address somewhat of storage. And what were the size of the units again? What was the square footage for the one-bedrooms or the-
They're still in preliminary stages for that. Nothing's really designed inside.
So there is a floor layout, I believe.
Yeah, I got it written.
Yeah, so-
Twenty-five by thirty-two, something like that, which is, is that six hundred square feet?
Correct, and one of them gives you an actual
Eight hundred square feet.
Layout of the units themselves.
Yeah, the top one, this one right here.
We can certainly work on incorporating storage into the units.
So here, it looks like they'd have like an entry pantry, pantry closet, whatever, kitchen, living room, bedroom, bathroom.
As we're getting into, it's like we want, on quality, it's also the amenities- As we're getting into, it's like we want, you know, on quality, it's also the amenities, pieces, and, and particularly whether or not you even include gathering space in interior, because there's sometimes not enough space inside. Somebody's having celebrations or other types of things in an apartment complex, that you have some type of common space.
You're probably better off, you know, getting rid of a unit or two and creating interior lockers, gather, like Paul said, a gathering entry space, interior bike storage, something like that.
Laundry.
And the reason, the biggest reason why I say that, and I, and I understand why you proposed the amount of units you proposed, for the people that weren't there, there was at least one person, maybe two, one of the city councilors had suggested that they present as many units as they could because of the lack of units that we have available in the city of Pittsburgh. So the original proposal was sixteen, I think?
Uh, well, we always presented mathematically what the ordinance.
Right, it was sixteen.
Require, yeah, it was sixteen, it's actually seventeen when we did the actual lot area and formal surveys.
So, so the, 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 the final number was kind of encouraged because of the lack of market rate housing that we have, because these are going to be market rate units, correct?
Correct, yeah, and I sincerely appreciate that comment. It was a long time ago, as a guy that sits on this side of the table, a lot of times we are accused of presenting a outlandish pie-in-the-sky idea.
I know it was encouraged, and I wanted the board members to know that, 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 that some of the people that were involved in this on the city side wanted to see as many units as possible, so.
Paul, was that, was that before the proposal of all the other projects in Pittsburgh?
No, this was just late spring, May, yeah, May-ish, April, May.
April, May.
So it was, it was well after one fifty-five Main and Snow Street, and well after that.
The, the city does need workforce housing, we really, there is a shortage. I, I agree, this isn't the most aesthetically pleasing rendering. Maybe more details, architectural details to break it up a bit. I, I agree with you, Peter, on that, but I, the density, there, there is such a shortage in the city for market rate housing.
And does the board have any question? I'm going to open up to the take some public comment as well.
Well, I just, I had a question, is there going to be an area for like package drop-off? Like if Amazon comes, it looks like that entry is kind of small.
So the, the mail receptacles are something that we have not worked out yet. We've put this together and we wanted to get the board's feedback as we play with the interior layout, certainly aesthetics, potentially the building facade and the, the shape of the building as well. So that, that's something that I, I think you'd probably want to have like a common, a common mail locker room that's typical to these type of buildings. And we had talked to, this is in, in-unit laundry is.
Yes.
Yeah, so this would not need like a common laundry area or anything like that.
There's in-unit laundry?
Each, each unit will have its own.
In-unit laundry?
Yeah, washer dryer.
They are a little small, a little tight, size-wise.
If, if they're eight hundred square feet, that's a boat, that's a boat typical for a one-bedroom. That's not...
Is that what the one bedrooms are?
That's what the size on these plans, if they end up being that, yeah, they're eight hundred square feet, they're a little bit over. It's thirty-two, thirty-two feet, two inches by twenty-five, so it's like eight hundred and two square feet or something.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take some public comment. And I would just ask, can you come up to the podium, state your name? Do you have a comment?
I'm Ryan Up, and this is my wife, Bray Up. We own sixteen Atlantic Avenue, which butts right behind this proposed site that they're wanting to build. This is already a noise hazard beyond belief that's already causing all kind of noise pollution, whether it's the dumpsters, cars ripping up and down Summer Street, the other street that's already has unpaved, it looks like driving up and down Baghdad Street. So if you're proposing to put an additional twenty-four-plus one-bedroom low-income housing there, how is that going to affect the, you know, I, I go ripping, looking through the pages of PDFs of all the police logs, there's, last week was forty-seven pages, PDF pages of police logs of wellness checks, robberies, loud this, loud that. How is that going to affect this area? And do you have a, what kind of dumpster plan do you have for that backyard? The dumpsters are already right next to my swimming pool. It's bad, if they're coming and emptying this at three-thirty in the morning, and this just sounds like a huge cash grab for you to want to stick a, a small space up there just to fill up a hu- a huge parking lot.
We've just moved into this area, and we love our home, love the area, and this would have detoured us, like we wouldn't have done it. We just, we wouldn't have moved to Pittsburgh, we would have said, forget this. If we had known that this was coming and certain areas, like, no, I mean, it's taken the whole area that we've moved into, and it's going to take the values of all those homes, those older beautiful homes that could go up, it'll take them down. Why would anybody want to move into that area and bring their home up when you've got this in your backyard? All of the people that live in that area, this is a huge deterrent to take their homes, if they haven't already fixed them up, and just turn them into multifamily homes and say, peace out, I'm out of here, you can have Pittsburgh. We wouldn't have done it, we would have stayed where we were.
Pittsburgh and Atlantic Avenue area around the...
It's a beautiful area, but this will take it down.
Is gorgeous and can be made much more beautiful, besides making a quick buck on this and saying, well, we got twenty-five more people.
I understand, the area might need more housing, but this is the wrong area to put more housing in for that level of people. It's not going to bring the area up, it will bring it down. You wouldn't want it next to your home.
As an alternative, what would you like to see on that site?
Well, I mean, if something has to go on that site, originally, a building had been put there as a business. I wouldn't have put a business next to residential, but it happened already. Now, that building that was a business building is now residential or multi-whatever, because...
Talking about Crown Point, the brick building?
The Quest Building's there.
Yeah, that's not a residential building, it's a commercial building.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the bar keeps going down.
Yep.
Why? Why not bring it up? If you want Pittsburgh to grow and become better, make it grow and become better. Don't keep saying, oh, we need more housing for lower-income people.
Whoa, 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 no one said low income, first of all, you guys did.
We said market value.
They're market rent, it's market rent housing.
But they're one, one...
But they're eight bed, eight hundred square foot.
One unit, eight hundred square feet.
What does one bedroom have to do with low income?
That's typically what you bring in, instead of a three-bedroom.
Really?
Typically.
Well, I mean, if you're young and starting out, yes, you're going to start out with eight hundred square feet, I did too. But the, like, a lot of people, when you go to these areas, a lot of it doesn't come up. And you know this, you can, I mean, argue with me over it, that it's all, you know, young people just getting started in life, but it's not.
Okay.
And typically, how many more calls are you going to get from the ambulances coming over there doing more wellness checks, more ODs?
Will it cost the city money in the long run? Will it actually bring the town up in the long run?
All right, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
I, I will, if we do get to the point where we're going to vote on this, I will make it a permit condition that the dumpsters can only be emptied during normal course of business.
Yeah, we'd have no problem with that. I do, would like to provide a point of clarification. There's not a dumpster on the site right now. I think the dumpster that's being complained about is actually associated with the...
Crown Point.
Yeah, our, our site is a empty parking lot that truthfully is used for people to store cars and possibly abandoned cars.
And we probably, Mike, we probably could make a note to send Crown Point, I was going to say his name, but Crown Point, a message telling him to move their dumpster away from the residential properties and screen it.
I've actually called them, they've been here at three-thirty in the morning.
That's not right, I, I agree, that, that shouldn't happen.
It sounded like a bomb.
It will, it will, it will mean a lot more to them coming from the city. So we'll, we'll try and send a note and see if we can, because that, that shouldn't happen, that's not right. So at the very least, we'll see if we can do something about that.
How many dumpsters would be provided for, is that how many?
This is one dumpster, correct, Seth?
Correct.
So accommodate thirty people?
Well, yeah, however many units end up getting approved, twenty-four or less, it's not going to be more than twenty-four.
All right, is, anybody else would like to speak on the matter? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Judy Cormier. I live at six thirty-nine Merrim Avenue in Leominster, and I own the property at thirty-two Beacon Street. My concern is that this, is this the total twenty-four, twenty-four units? I'm counting the windows and I'm trying to figure out that is. Now, that to me seems like it's going to run from the White House on Beacon Street to the street on Summer Street, that whole area.
It's going this way?
Looks like it's facing Beacon.
It's going to be facing Beacon.
No, 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 faces Summer Street.
How do they have room from Beacon to Crown Point?
Seth, how wide is the lot?
It doesn't seem like it would fit from Beacon to Crown Point.
Paul, can you bring up the site plan?
Yeah, 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 I was just gonna...
Let's just go around numbers here.
Yeah, you can ballpark it.
Approximately a hundred and fifty feet wide.
And the building is how wide?
Uh, one-nineteen is its biggest.
So the, the lot is a hundred and fifty feet wide, the building's a hundred and nineteen feet.
So it is going to be facing, this is going to be facing Summer?
Summer Street, correct. So the, the narrow side of the building, which is how wide, what's the width of the building?
Uh, seventy deep, I would say.
So the, I gotta see if I still have it open here, sorry. The, this, this is the side that's going to be facing Beacon.
Oh, okay, all right.
The narrow side, the width of the building is going to be facing Beacon.
Well, that's, that's fine, that's good, except seventeen, I'm, I didn't hear exactly everything. Seventeen units was the original amount that was going in, and now it's...
No, that's the, that's the base, that's the minimum that was required by, that was the amount required by our zoning without the design that they chose.
Based upon the square footage of the lot.
Yes.
Each unit requires amount, certain amount of square footage. Based upon the current size of the lot, seventeen would be allowed. They're seeking relief to improve it to twenty-four.
Let's put it this way, that was the minimum that our zoning requires.
Right, the minimum.
I shouldn't say minimum, it's the baseline that our zoning requires. The, the, with, with the size of the lot, it's how many they could fit by right. That's what I meant to say.
Right, and like I say, I can't even imagine this unit being there. But it probably isn't cost-effective if they only put up seventeen units, more than likely. My concern is, is, like I say, I own property in the area, I grew up in that area, and this doesn't look like it fits in that area at all. It just doesn't look like it fits. And to have a big apartment complex like this in a residential, because it basically is a residential area, even though Beacon Street does have apartments, it's just, it doesn't look right, it, it just doesn't look right. Maybe if they would just allow the seventeen units, it might not look as, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think what ends up happening there, though, is if they go that route, and I'm just guessing, the building size doesn't change, they're just bigger units.
Oh.
You have, you have three and four bedroom units instead of one and two bedroom.
Building size is going to stay?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying that, that if, if a developer ends up going that route, it's usually, you offset the number of units by what you can get more rent, which is larger bedrooms, larger, more bedrooms. I'm not saying they're going to do that, because I don't know.
Right.
I'm just saying that's the alternative.
So, and one obviously observation that I think you pointed out, the frontage on Beacon Street, so also the look when you're looking at it that way, so I'm looking at this rendering here, it doesn't really look like the front on Beacon Street.
Yeah.
It's just like a flat with a couple doors coming out. So again, back to that relief of making it look like this is an address of Beacon Street, is it part of the frontage of Beacon Street?
Yeah, what I've heard from feedback so far is there's a lot of aesthetic things that we're to address, break up the building a little bit, and I, I think that providing a perspective from Beacon Street is well within our wheelhouse at this point.
Okay, I just want to point that out since we're discussing aesthetics that...
And, and I think while we're talking about it, I think the other thing that might go a long way with the, the, you know, aesthetic feel of the building, is if you, and I don't know how this moves in, but if you move those two side corner entrances you have, at least the one on Beacon Street, maybe to the middle of the building, to the end of that hallway, and then you create a center grand entrance, like a lot of the Atlantic Street properties have, where you have, you know, more decorative porch entrance to the front of that building, I think that might tie it in a little bit better, too.
Can I speak to that, actually? My name is Joan McWilliams, I own property on Atlantic Ave., fifteen Atlantic, I live there. And what I, what I'd like to speak to is the seventeen versus the twenty-four before we get a little bit further on in this. So I do understand that if we go from seventeen, which is the minimum, and then we go up to twenty-four, which is proposed maximum, the size of the building doesn't change.
No, no, I, I was, I was just guessing, I'm not saying that that's the case.
Well, so we're going to imagine the size of the building doesn't change, but what does change is the traffic. What does change is the amount of, the amount of cars there, the amount of traffic going in and out of the neighborhood at this point right now. If you come down Beacon Street onto Summer, that is a real nice cut-through for a lot of people. And then going from, from Summer into seventy-six Summer, it's almost like you have to take your life in your hands because people are going to side swipe you. So that's a very active corner going into this neighborhood of beautiful homes that have been there for ages and are very, very, very well taken care of. And to put something like this up in that area as like the gateway, did I hear somebody say the gateway to the neighborhood, that isn't in line with what we have there. We have beautiful, grand, as you said, grand homes with grand entrances, and we have multifamilies that are not, I know that Judy does own a mult, that multifamily that keeps coming up here, that one and the one next door, twenty-eight, which also has, I'm, I'm not sure, four, five, I'm not sure. The issue, the, the thing with those properties is they look like homes. You wouldn't really go through this neighborhood and say, that is a, you know, multifamily, that is a multifamily. So I guess in, in keeping with the look and to keep property values current, it wouldn't be a bad idea if we took some of these plans and kind of reworked them. I know the plans are done and it's a little bit hard to, to go back, but if we're going to try to keep Pittsburgh looking in a way that we want it to look, we want it to be vibrant and growing, we want to make sure that what we're putting here, what we're building is something that is really going to bring people in and really want to take care of and really love their land that they're, that they're living in.
Where other people who are building this live, do they live in, around?
They don't have to, they don't have to disclose where they live.
Okay, I'm just curious, because of the upkeep and the, whatever.
So I, I, one of the permit conditions would almost certainly be that this be professionally managed. Would it be professionally managed?
Yeah.
Because, and I only say that for that exact reason, that we want to make sure that it's maintained. You know, when you have a building this size that's not big enough to definitely be professionally managed, but not small enough where, I, I think it's, my point is, I think it's too big for one person to handle, so you would assume that that would be a safe permit condition? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other aspects, other considerations would also be security. So we'd want to make sure that...
In regards to private security on site?
On private security, right.
Cameras or anything like that?
Cameras.
Are you planning on anything like that?
Any of that and, and lighting?
Well, lighting, we've addressed on our plans, we do have parking lot lighting that's compliant with zoning ordinance. Cameras, I don't, do you have a feeling on that? I don't, I...
I'm not even saying they're necessarily guaranteed, I'm just curious, they're not required.
No, I, I admittedly have not dealt with that on a building of this size. Like, I don't know what people's perspective are these days of being monitored all the time, even though my phone tracks me everywhere I go.
Yeah, I mean, my original, my, my initial thought would just be entry hallway, you know...
You have to get a key to get into the building, right?
Yeah, it would be like a, like a FOB-type scenario, it is...
Yeah, so we want, I, we'd like to see... Yeah, so we want, we'd like to see a plan addressing that as well.
Just, yeah, tell us how you get into the building and that sort of stuff. Whatever you plan to do.
I hear where you're coming from now, I was overreaching.
That aspect about the tenant, how they get in and out of the building, that it's secure, again, approaching the building.
Yeah, I was going towards like a guard turret scenario.
No, no, you know, there's doorbell cameras these days.
So, in order to sum up what I'm saying, and I know there's more people that want to talk, I just would like to say, I would like to see, if something is going in there, I would not like to see this building, a rectangular box going into this neighborhood, it's a, it's a prominent piece of property in Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
And we need to respect it in that way. So, make it look like homes rather than...
Right, and my property has seven apartments, and not on a lot of land, as was pointed out, but I do have a backyard with a clothesline and places for the children to play, and every unit has a porch that they can go outside, sit in, and they use the backyard, and every unit has a porch. I don't know, I, I just think that it needs more character, that's all.
Appreciate, we appreciate your comments. We've got some, I'll say, some larger developments down on Main Street that are occurring, and some of them have like rooftop areas in the middle of the areas, and others have separate gathering space aspects, so it's like, that's kind of a key thing on the amenities. As mentioned, if you, again, if you end up doing pets, then you have to provide for spaces for them, but similar to humans, we try to see if there's any, any other outside space at all or any other meaning locations or... Hello, good evening. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Brendan McWilliams, 31 Atlantic Ave.
All right.
My concern is everything that has just been stated, as well as, again, the traffic flow. I grew up on Atlantic Ave, and I liked the neighborhood enough that I bought my house on Atlantic Ave. These are unique, beautiful houses. This not only does not fit in with the look of the neighborhood, but Beacon Street has 11 properties on it, nine of the 11 are multifamilies, and because of the age of the houses, many of them do not have adequate parking, and they use, right where this is proposed, they use this for parking. Seven Atlantic Ave, 10, 12 Atlantic Ave also do not have adequate parking. They park here as well, as well as the property at 87 Summer Street that does not have parking at all, and they park here. So, I'm curious to know, this building goes in, where are all these people going to park up at Atlantic Ave?
All right, thank you for your comment, that's a good...
And I would also assume that, assuming that these gentlemen do not live locally, this seems like nothing but a cash grab to me, and they don't care what happens to the neighborhood as long as they get their money.
Okay.
So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Please just, good evening.
Bonnie McCullough, I, my husband and I own 19 and 21 Beacon Street. This building would be basically, it looks like within 20 feet of my home, and I understand that the area has many multifamilies, but our multifamily is a duplex. Each side of it is 1,800 square feet and has outdoor space, you know, porches and decks and backyard areas for people to, for kids to play. And that's kind of the way, what I would like to have it be a little bit more like that, if you have, you know, if you're going to have a building like that, if you had 20 more, 24 units, there's very good potential for there being couples in each one and having two cars per unit. I don't see how you're going to have space on that lot, even, you know, you had a good point with a lot of the neighbors parked there, no, they shouldn't probably, there should be another solution for them, but I don't see how you can fit 50 cars in that space.
Are you just to the east, right, on the property line?
Right where the dumpster is, pretty much.
So, you have like the, is that the, like an easement?
I do have a parking easement right there. Also, I don't know if they realize that, I'm not sure exactly where our septic system goes, sort of towards that area, I'm not sure, would have to, they'd have to look at the plans, but it might go underneath that, that parking lot.
The sewer line, you mean?
The sewer line, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, our, our basic concern is density and parking.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's that, it's, Paul, it's that property that's actually with the name on it, it's their name?
Yeah, I mean, that...
I can't see, I'm sorry.
We've lived there for 30 years, and we, we like the area, it's a nice neighborhood. I think that the density that they're talking about would really change it, it would almost double the amount of people for, on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's, as, sorry, do you, same residence?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome question.
I'm the other half.
All right.
Okay, so...
What's your name?
Stefan.
Stefan.
And, yeah, so 1921 Beacon, and just so that we're clear, I just want to show somebody this.
Okay, you can bring it up.
So, this is easement.
Yeah, it shows on their plan.
See there?
Okay.
And, so that's where we are.
Can I see that for a second? They did show it on their plan, it still says 10 foot right of way, and then it says proposed concrete curve at limit of right of way. So, basically, it looks like you're not touching the right of way, and you're just creating that concrete curve at the end of it.
Correct, sir, it's, it's respected that there is a right of way or easement for the use of the butter, we're preserving that, so they can use it as they always have.
So, that will remain?
They're also looking to put, it looks like a landscaping strip, you see the perpendicular vertical line there, a landscape, landscaping strip in between, I'm not sure if they discussed that with you. They're not proposing a fence at this time, the question would be whether or not you prefer a fence.
Yeah, yeah, please, so people can hear you.
Okay, so, when we, when we bought this property, we had the ability to buy in several other communities, but we weren't going to get our bang for the buck for this property that we owned that is 1921 Beacon Street. It, it had the biggest parking lot I've ever seen in my life. If you looked out any room in the house, we live on 19 Beacon Street, which basically we'd be staring at the back of that building. Right now, I can see all the way past the railroad tracks, beautiful, beautiful scenery, that's gone, that's no longer, if, if this happens. It renders our property, for what we valued it to be, useless. We'd have to move, that's, at that point, we would be crowded out of our own property. It's going to happen, and I don't think I'm going to be the only one. I can tell you, my next door neighbor, that that'll be the last straw for him, too. He's going to move.
But does it change, if it, does it change if it's a 30,000 square foot commercial building? That's what, that's what I'm trying to get at, something's going to happen on this site. Does that change if it's a giant commercial building and there's 10 commercial tenants there?
I don't think this site, if, if we all walked over to it and looked, that this fits, or that a giant commercial building fits there.
But a commercial building would be allowed by right, meaning they don't even need approval for that.
Right, okay, but where are my rights? That's what I'm trying to get at, where is his rights?
You have rights on your property, not on a neighboring property.
I'm sorry?
You have rights on your property, not on a neighboring property that you don't own.
But it's abutting, you know, where we were promised that we would have a driveway.
You're still, we'll keep, they're going to keep the driveway, definitely.
Right.
So, you're, you're still going to maintain your driveway, we're not touching, it won't touch your property rights. Like Paul had said, if you, if you think you feel more comfortable with a fence in that landscape strip, we'll make, I'm going to make them put a fence there. I, I'm just trying to think, I mean, aside from keeping it as a sea of pavement, which something's going to happen to this site, something's going to get developed on that site, it's just a question of, you know, certainly how we can make it fit into the neighborhood, and what makes the most sense for the city of Pittsburgh as a whole. So, it's, it's balancing those interests.
Yeah, but you, you're pushing certain people out of Pittsburgh by balancing people into Pittsburgh. I, I don't understand that, you're, I mean, you're taking a really nice neighborhood and you're pushing the people who are making it nice out. That's, that's, that's what I'm kind of seeing. I get your point, so, you know, it, you have no say in this.
Well, that's not the intention. The intention is to try to make it work, that work with the zoning that's in place, and to compromise and balance, as, as Paul mentioned, between the neighborhood and the, and the needs of the city, and make it a pleasant place to, to live, work, and play.
Right, right, and, and, you know, we've brought up two children, you know, on the property, felt safe, blah, 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 I, I...
So, and then I'll bring, so I'll, in, in your interest, I'll also bring this up, is, is, look at the size, the height requirements, the existing heights of the buildings that are in the surrounding area as well, you know, and yes, we have the professional building, but outside of that, you know, is this towering over, or is it average?
Yeah, we can certainly look at that, so the, the zoning ordinance actually prescribes a maximum allowable height, and we're under that, so that this is...
Well, I understand that, but it's also NBD, so that it's, you know, meant for some, could also meant for something taller, so it's, again, what does it, what does it fill in?
Same height requirement, 35 feet.
Is it 35 feet?
Yeah, it's really, we thought it was higher.
I thought, because I'm thinking it was high, really high, too, it's only 35 feet? Okay.
Or 36 feet, 36 feet, maybe? 35 or 36.
Only because of Crown Point, so I'm thinking it's larger.
Crown Point's higher than that, Crown Point's way higher than that, but that's...
36 feet is what's allowed.
All right.
All right.
We're under that.
Aside from that, the aesthetics, you know, I guess my view's gone, and I have no rights to have a view, okay? That's fine.
No, 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 that's not what I was trying to imply, we, we are trying to take all of these comments into consideration. What I'm trying to say is, we also have to look at the greater good of the city of Pittsburgh. That's part of what our board does, it's, it's, it's taking into account of the neighbors and neighbor consideration.
Okay, but then I leave.
Well, that's, but that's your decision.
Oh, no, it's not.
Yes, it is.
I, I bought the unit with, with certain intent and with certain value of the neighborhood. Putting in more than doubling the traffic flow and the amount of people who live in that neighborhood is, it's going to be a nightmare for everyone in that neighborhood. It's, it's just going to be a total shock, I can tell you.
All right. Well, we understand your comments, and we're working with the applicant.
Okay, and that was just some of the points. We have had damage, our sewer system basically runs under that right of way, that entire right of way. When the garbage trucks come, they caved in our sewer system, nothing I could do about it. It's not my property, like you said, I have no rights, you know, I've got a right of way.
What garbage trucks are coming?
The dump truck comes in and goes to the back of his property at 3:00 a.m., and it's a huge dump truck on, on, on a...
But that's not this development.
That's Crown Point.
That's Crown Point.
But it goes right through that, that's the only way the dump truck can get in there.
Well, the good news is, they're not going to be able to go through there anymore once they develop the site.
How, how... Yeah, so, I, I think there's been a lot of speculation, and if it's all right with the board, I'll jump in and just address a couple of these things.
Just do the dumpster for now, because I'd like him to finish what he might decide to do.
So, the dumpster is something that we're willing to talk with the board about screening. The dumpster for this project is proposed behind our building, and it's screened by a row of arbivites, and then it's surrounded by a continuous vinyl privacy fence as well. The dumpster that is existing is not on our site, that's on another site adjacent, associated with the larger building at 76 Summer Street, I'm assuming, but this is all open to discussion with the board, we're, we're not looking to put in any infrastructure that's going to agree with any neighbors, in fact, it's the opposite. We came forward, taking a look at an existing site, a developed site, and taking a look at what we can put in place to improve that here, and, and that's really what we're here to discuss with the board tonight. So, I will stand aside for a little bit.
Well, I'll let you get back to the other stuff you want to cover as soon as, oh, here's, here's the landscape plan, which shows the arbivites, so, and I'm glad you said that, because I didn't even pay attention to that when I saw the landscape plan. So, after, to the right of your right of way, that driveway, there's going to be a row of arbivites that's going to screen you from this building and from the dumpsters.
But the dumpsters will be right there.
They'll be behind the trees, behind the arbivites, yes.
Right.
They'll be, they'll be screened from your property.
Getting dumped somehow.
But that, we'll make sure that it gets dumped only during normal business hours, that it's, that 3:00 a.m. stuff, and I apologize, this, I mean, I apologize, I didn't know that it existed, but that shouldn't happen, that's crazy that, that there's even a company that does that at 3:00 a.m., but we'll make sure to, and, and maybe you could pass this along to the Crown Point people as well, I know you know the same people that I'm thinking of.
I could pass it along to him.
Exactly, right, and just tell them, hey, this is causing a problem, you might want to move it somewhere else. They have a huge site, they can move it to the nursing home side, for all we know, or whatever, so, so anyway.
So, so basically, that dumpster is going to be closer now to my property.
That, so, we're talking about two different, two different things.
Right, yes, we are. The dumpster that's going to be on the site is now going to be...
I don't know where the existing one is, but, but these ones will have trees presumably larger than the dumpster, screening the dumpster in the house, correct?
Yeah, so, we actually have a full landscape sheet and the height of those, if you bear with me. Those are four to six feet tall at time of planting, there's a total of 13 of them, and so, and arbivite is evergreen hedge, so all year screening. If, if the board prefers a fence, we can certainly speak with Mr. Geneson about that. If bigger trees make everybody happy, I'm sure that's something that we can provide as well. But again, we're, we're talking about an area that, that's an existing, frankly, a deteriorating parking lot, and we're proposing to provide a continuous landscape screening at the limits of it, so that it's, I appreciate that change is difficult, but we are really here to work with the board and incorporate something that's going to work better with this site.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Did you have anything else, Stefan?
So, the, the proposed, right now, you're looking at it at the right of way. I'm trying to figure out, so is, is that narrow right of way...
To the right of, it's to the right of that arbivite line, right? Same width?
Same, same width, so that, that allows a single car to go there. Right now, you can drive a Mack truck, people have, and it ruined our septic system. Now, now you're saying that what we're going to be left with is this narrow corridor that we somehow have to...
But that is your property.
Back in that...
That was your easement, that is your easement to, on, on the property, to access...
Your property is 7,800 square feet, give or take, and that 10 feet is on their property, but you have a legal right to use that 10 feet, so that's what they're maintaining, is the legal right you have to that 10 feet.
And they're trying to give you, making sure that you have some privacy regarding that.
Well, trees.
The, right, the trees, or again, we mentioned, unless you'd like a fence, white vinyl fence or type of fence as a separation.
Given how narrow that is, I wouldn't recommend a fence, plowing it and snow removal, a fence is just going to get damaged and broken, I mean, we'll, we'll make them do it if you want, but it's, I have a feeling, if you do a decorative vinyl fence, you, you, almost certainly, I mean, you, I suppose you could plow it, but you would damage it fairly easily. Trees, tall trees might be a much better solution, properly spaced arbivites... Tall trees might be a much better solution, properly spaced arbivites, 'cause once they grow in, they should be shoulder to shoulder.
They should also be higher than a six-foot fence, eventually.
Right.
They're four to six feet going in.
Oh, I'm against it.
Okay, that's fine.
Absolutely.
No, we, no, we, we, we understand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Paul, you see a couple of hands raised on the...
Oh, I, I, sorry, I, you, go ahead, go ahead.
What I'm gonna say is gonna sound very far-fetched, but if you look into the future, say twenty years and thirty years, I don't know what the, what they paid for this property, but if there could be proposed to all the people that live in that area to split the cost of rebuying that property back, and maybe the city making it a park or something like that, that to me, in the long run of this city, could benefit it more. I don't know how many parks are in this city, but it would take downtown property or close to downtown, and keep it where all the homes and residential areas that are right there where we are, let their kids play there, it won't be as junked up and hard to keep up and noise and all the different angles, then they get their money and they can go purchase property somewhere that would fit a little bit better to build what they want, smaller units, multifamily, whatever. But our area, from what I'm hearing, we don't want it. And if you fast-forward time, will it improve Pittsburgh? Will it really improve Pittsburgh, other than putting money in somebody else's pocket? Just think, but your decisions that you make aren't just today, they go forward, just think about it.
Thank you.
You're planning board, I think they...
Yeah, we do.
I've been doing this a long time, and so has Paula, and so has a lot of our other board members, we're very well aware of what we're, what we're doing.
It is a bal, it is a balance, because there's property rights involved, and zoning involved, and, um, there is a right to development, and oftentimes, there's a right to develop by rights, certain things that there's no control over. Because this is a special permit, there is some control over this, this particular project, that the, the board can work with the applicant and the neighborhood in order to try to see, make something that fits. And it may not be perfect, but it can be an improvement, and so we're trying, so, again, they have the, there's developer rights in order to develop their own private property, just as everyone who owns property has that, um, provision as well.
We do have two hands raised virtually. You wanna get to those?
Yes.
Ms. Jambraco was first.
Yep. Kimberly, um, if you are okay to speak, if you just wanna unmute?
Uh, hi, this is actually Gaetano Jambraco, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
I'm clear.
Uh, my wife Kimberly is also here as well, uh, we're just tending to our infant daughter as...
Can, can you go close to the microphone like you were a second ago?
Uh, yes, can you hear me now?
Not as good as we could when you first introduced yourself.
Oh, man, uh, how about now?
Nope.
Oh, hold on, was that Dan, Dan, did you turn the volume down?
How about now?
There we go, perfect.
That's better.
Um, thank you very much, and, uh, good evening to the board members and the other members of my community that are also there, uh, in person. Um, like I said, my name is Gaetano Jambraco, and I reside at Thirty-Four Atlantic Avenue with my wife Kimberly and our young daughter. Um, also, I, I am currently an assistant super at, uh, the Ten Main Street Project, about two point, about point-two-five miles down the street. Uh, I've been there for a little over six months, and that is a thirty-eight, uh, apartment complex with a brick facade that connects the old Summer Street Fire Station to the old furniture factory, um, that is going to, uh, that, I mean, it updates an old historic building and adds value aesthetically to, uh, the downtown area and the gateway that keeps getting brought up. Um, I just don't understand how a twenty-four-unit complex is going to fit in, in an area with, um, homes that are on the National Historic Register, built by H.M. Francis, that was a man that basically was an architect that designed the entire downtown and, um, built buildings that we're still using today and are actually trying to update. Um, there are sites in and around downtown on Lunenburg Street and on Water Street that the city is basically trying to give away. I don't understand why we can't put a development like this in those areas to uproot those communities that need it way more than ours does. Um, if you want to make Beacon Street look more pleasant, pave it, instead of making it, you know, look like perushia, as it is right now. Um, it, uh, it, it's just frustrating to me when I get something in the mail, um, that, you know, says that you're gonna put a twenty-four-unit monstrosity, uh, right near where I have a young family that I'm trying to raise and, in a community, and trying to make this community a little bit better. Um, one of the board members smugly said, would you rather have, you know, something like this or a commercial building? Like, I, why do we need another Dollar General? Why do we need another condo complex? Why can't it be a park that attracts younger families to the area? I, I don't understand why we want to downplay the historic value that all of these homes add to the area.
I'm gonna interrupt. I don't think anyone said anything smugly tonight, that was just a, a question, and really, what would you like to see? That's why we're here.
It wasn't a question, it was a statement. Are you going to have a residential, residential building that you have an opportunity to choose upon, or is it going to be another commercial building?
Because something's going to be there. Take that, take that how you want.
Okay.
Why don't you put something that adds value?
We, basically, what we're wondering is, why don't we put something that adds value, not only monetarily, but historically, that enriches the community, instead of something that will stand out like a sore thumb driving down the gateway into the new downtown? You just paved Summer Street to make it more viable and to make it more accessible into the downtown area, where we wanna drive commerce and drive small businesses. Why are we trying to add another twenty-four-unit complex that looks, that's on the nose to everything that we're trying to build here?
The city did work on a, updates to its zoning ordinance, as well as the, the downtown area and development plans for future development, and a new twenty-year plan, um, that included, also included this area. It did not include a park at that, that time, it was, didn't go out for public comment, of public interest, um, for the whole, like redevelopment and for the development of downtown, as well as all the areas on, we're talking about Summer Street, Water Street, um, areas. So there are some, um, plans and targeted areas in place, um, that the city look, is looking towards to help improve areas of the city. This one, this one in particular is also...
Which is wonderful, but this is an area that doesn't need much improvement. This is an area that, again, historically has many, has lovely homes, lovely homes, and something like this just looks like a, the blueprint for a barn that I might wanna build on a property that I had somewhere out in Westminster.
I think the board understands that, and I think the applicant understands, that what should go on the site should try to fit in with the neighborhood.
But it's not going to at twenty-four units.
And I am also aware that the state has allocated money to build things like this that are closer to the train station.
Yes, they are, they are, they are looking, the Commonwealth is looking also at increasing density and for housing, because we're in desperate housing needs.
Wonderful, so something like this shouldn't really go in a residential area, it should go into a place where there isn't anything already there.
So, I think...
Other commercial businesses, like a chicken, uh, restaurant in a CVS.
Well, we understand your perspective, do you have any other comments regarding that it doesn't fit into the neighborhood and potentially too many units?
Well, the residents at this address are against this building being built.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, uh, Michael Barth. Michael, it's all yours when you're ready.
Hello, good evening. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you guys in person this evening, but, um, I'm at Twenty-Five Beacon Street, right next to Stefan and Bonnie. Um, I have to add my voice to theirs inasmuch as this building feels really out of character for the neighborhood, a neighborhood that really is known for old grand houses. Now, these older houses may have been broken up into multiple units, mine has not, I'm a single-family owner-occupied home, that now, suddenly, I get a postcard in the mail that I'm getting a twenty-four-unit box dropped in less than a hundred feet from my house.
Yeah, no, we're here, yeah, anything else?
Anything else?
Um, I really do feel outright, you've heard it before, and I'm just gonna add my voice to it, this, this project, as it stands, is out of character for the neighborhood. Um, I fully agree that the owner of the property has the right to develop what they want, if it's within character of the neighborhood. As was stated before, perhaps townhouses along Beacon Street that felt like they belonged there, not a large box that's been tarted up just a little bit to make it not look like a large box. I had to laugh when someone earlier said it looks like a Motel Six, which it kind of really does. Um, I'd almost say that if you were gonna put even commercial in there, that would be preferable, as long as it was pushed down towards the Summer Street end of the property. Um, I do feel bad for my neighbors at Nineteen and Twenty-One, because they're getting this monolith stuffed within feet of their house. Their views are gone. Three-story building of this size there, it just does not feel like it belongs in that neighborhood.
We appreciate your comments.
But I don't...
Sorry, sorry, thought you were done, go ahead, Michael. Go ahead.
It does feel like this was considered a foregone conclusion by the board, being that this is this far along in planning, and we've only all heard about this from a postcard in the mail of week or so ago?
Don't make any assumptions, this is the first time, we've seen plans. This is why it's under, that's the first meeting, and it's, and it's under review, and this is why we have a public meeting, we're seeking public input. So, in order to, in order to look at the, each development.
I just think that something more along the lines of, as was stated before, townhouses along Beacon Street would go more a long way to the feeling like they belong in the neighborhood than this box.
Okay.
Really the best statement I can call for this thing. And I think the developer knows that, that's why they didn't really wanna show pictures of it here until the last minute, they wanted to talk about the sewer lines and, you know, everything else on the plot plan, not show what this building actually looks like.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome, this is what we're here for. Is there anybody else remotely?
There's no one.
For that? And is there anybody else here at this time? I, I'm gonna make the assumption here that the board's not ready to make enough determination on this plan, and...
Uh, you didn't need to tell us that.
For that. Um, also, another aspect to think about is, whenever you come, come up with a configuration, maybe it is pushed further away from the joining of butter, and it goes more towards the Summer Street area, or more towards on the Beacon Street side, or...
Correct, we, we've received a lot of feedback, um, from the board and the butters, we appreciate it all, and we will incorporate whatever we can, uh, Mickey and I will talk in the coming days. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, there, there are a lot of speculation about potential bad scenarios. Uh, again, this, this lot, it's continuous pavement going all the way to, to Seventy-Six Crown Point, people are using that regularly, and we're proposing to remedy that, no matter what we do on this site. So we're removing the precarious intersection at Summer and Beacon Street, where people are cutting right through, going across both lanes of traffic, we're moving that lane to a midpoint, which is much farther from abutting properties, and then for the folks at Nineteen Beacon Street, Nineteen to Twenty-One Beacon Street, there's an existing curb cut right there as well, and that's used to pass through, and we're omitting that from this, and preserving their right to use a parking strip that they have there. So these are all things that we're aware of, and, and we're gonna continue to incorporate that as we work to revise these, to take into the feedback that we've received tonight. So, we appreciate your time, um, unless the board has any other questions for us.
The board have...
I'd like to, yeah, just say one other thing, you know, I, I've been, been on the board for a long enough time, and, uh, that we've had discussions on projects all the time, and we had a lot of input from the butters on certain projects. But I have to say that in all the years that I've been on the board, I've never been subject to so many people commenting that they do not like the project, never. So my, my, my question to you is, would you even think about moving forward with a project like that, when you have every butter, most probably even the ones that aren't here, that don't want that project? So, you know, secondly, I'd like to say, I, I am very, very much in favor of that plot being developed, and I think what you're gonna do with that lot, with all the different landscaping and the improvements, it's gonna make the lot, uh, a hundred and ten percent better. And I, I really strongly believe that if you would've come in here with plans, as, as we're talked about a little bit, of some nice four-to-six-unit, two-story townhouses, possibly with garages, I don't think there would be any butter that would object to that, because that would fit nicely into the neighborhood. Everybody objects to the design that you want to develop. And I, and I'm not even in favor of enhancing it with, with whatever, some architectural D, it's still gonna be a big box, with a hallway down the middle, doors to the left and right, like a dormitory. And, and one, uh, one comment that I want to bring out again, that I, one of the butters spoke about, they really hit home with me, the building that you're offering to build has absolutely no space for tenants to, to do anything outside. E, even, even Thirty-Two Beacon Street, which is a seven-family home on a tiny, tiny lot, they have a backyard, where the tenants can sit out in lawn chairs, they have clotheslines for the tenants, there's a swing set back there, there's places for the tenants to go outside, there's no place for the tenants to go outside in this complex. So I, I would hope that the, the developers take all these things into consideration, come back to the board with a revised plan that fits better in the neighborhood architecturally, and, uh, I think that you'll have no problem passing, having that pass.
We'll consider that, thank you.
Any other for them, from the board? And I, I just the thought, 'cause it's like named Beacon Street, and I'm thinking of Beacon Street in Boston. So you think of the Beacon Street, the townhouses, and you think about the small courtyards out front, or the...
Okay.
Aspects that kind of...
Paul, I think you see, see one hand?
There's another hand.
Again?
Do you wanna take any more comments, Paul?
Nope, uh, well, is there one more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And then it's Nick, does anybody have...
We can ask him in a second.
Well, actually, Nick...
Chiantano, was it? Kimberly? Just unmuted you, if, if anyone, here, can you guys just keep the volume down? Maybe the hand was already raised?
I think that might have been a mistake.
Sorry about that.
That's, oh, that's okay, no problem, you all set?
Yep, we're all set, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Make a motion to continue to September...
Were there any other department comments?
There was some that, um, Nick Erickson had mentioned.
Okay.
Sorry, it's been a while ago, did he?
Yeah, he did.
And did we get any comments back from, um, fire?
No, we did not.
Okay, so, in the interim, too, please touch bases with the fire department to get their feedback on, on your proposals.
Will do. Make a motion to continue to September twenty-seventh, that's our next meeting.
Is the September meeting adequate for you, or, I mean, if it isn't, we can be extended time.
I didn't quite hear the exact date.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Also a Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday. That's our usual meeting, is the fourth Tuesday. Got a little screwed up in the summer, that's why we're on the second Tuesday today.
We have some homework, so hopefully, um, we'll get your plans in advance of that.
Captain Kringan's the contact at FPD now for fire prevention.
What is it?
Captain Kringan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Second that motion?
A motion's been made, the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
So we will be here next month, uh, the twenty-seventh. Thank you all for your time, have a great night.
Thanks, guys.
Very patient...
And there'll be postcards going up for that...
Not again, they don't, it'll be the twenty-seventh, we will be here September twenty-seventh.
In fairness, that's a ways away, because this is the beginning of the month, that's the end of the month, it's like seven weeks from now.
Okay, we, I only said that 'cause we don't usually re-notify, right?
I realize that, I think it, there's nothing saying that we can't... I think it, there's nothing saying that we can't.
All right, go ahead.
It might be a good idea.
I'll admit.
But if you jot down Tuesday, the 27th, same place, here. Okay.
Six o'clock.
Yep, yep.
It might not be the first thing on the agenda, but it'll be on the agenda.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, I would say, for the sake of argument, while we're talking about it now, it should be before Airport Road next month. It should be before Airport Road next month.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I was just saying, 'cause Paul just said it might not be the first thing, but I wouldn't want everyone here to sit through Airport Road. Just a mental note.
I expect that one will take some time.
Yes, I would expect so.
All right, next on our agenda, we have a public hearing for Beltry at 143 to 149 Claritin Street for parking relief for proposed retail store and restaurant.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so my name is Brian Beltry. I'm here to represent 143 to 149 Claritin Street. So the unit is, the building is 4,162 square feet and we're gonna divide the building into two units. One unit, we like to have a convenience store, which I think would be a great addition to the neighborhood. There's really nothing for that, for those people when they want something, like if they want some quick groceries, I think the closest thing is a Cumberley's, but you can't really get essential things from the Cumberland Farms.
It used to be Dick's, a quick check.
Yeah, I was just gonna-
I used to go to school there and I used to go-
House of Boschman just-
Sorry, I'm just going over there, I used to go buy 10-cent candy.
And then in the other unit, we like to open up a lounge pub area. I think it'd be a great addition to not only the neighborhood, but also to the city. We wanna try to make it a special place, a place where families and friends feel safe and they can enjoy their times. We think adding both of these things would be a great addition, not only to the neighborhood again, but to the city. We think it could bring some life, some, some energy, something positive.
So, aside from the convenience store, what's the size of the, the pub?
The pub?
Yes.
Uh, I think it's, I don't have an exact number, it's like a half.
2,000 square feet?
Roughly.
Okay.
So you said 4,162 total for the whole building?
Yeah, total, so it's like-
So I'm just trying to, um, do we know what the numbers are for the parking relief that you're seeking? Because we're looking at just some on-street parking.
So I've actually, I'm communicating with St. Joseph's Church right now, that, that parking lot that's right there. And right now, we're figuring out a price for how much so I could rent it.
Okay.
You know what?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Close enough.
Right down the street, yeah.
So we're, we're just trying to figure out how many spaces I'm gonna take and how much I'm gonna pay them a month.
Has like the garage, you said the garage on the end?
Did you?
Parking lot, their parking lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The church parking lot, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we just, they said that we'll figure something out, we're just trying to figure out how much to pay. And how many spaces I'll be using up. I don't think I need the whole, um-
I would hope not, because you're gonna have fire code issues there before you call out that parking lot.
Yeah, I'm thinking a couple dozen.
I'm curious, at 2,000 square feet, you probably can't get all that many people in there fire code-wise, so that's, that's, that's really the question, you know, that, that's gonna be more important, is once you design the building, how many people can you fit in it?
I think we were putting 99.
99 people?
I don't think it'll get to 99, but-
Oh, you're gonna definitely probably trigger fire.
Yeah, the lounge.
Yeah, the lounge.
That's a lot of people for-
When, when, Brian and I stopped in to talk to the building commissioner, what, a few weeks ago and-
Like last week, something like that.
Forty-nine, um, or definitely maybe it was nine-
You definitely get into, well, you know, sprinkler and fire protection issues when you exceed fif- 49.
It'd be interesting to see what, if you remember back a decade-plus ago, there was a neat little neighborhood place called Dempsey's. What their license was for, what their capacity was.
Is that the same place, is where Dempsey's was?
Yeah, it's the same place.
Okay, all right, now I was trying to picture it.
Commission thing anyway, right?
It is, yeah. And building and fire-
In fire code, right.
So you need to look at the aspect to see what it would, what you're going to need, what you can design for the space-
Yeah, of course.
-and accommodate for that, because it's like, so we're seeking, when you're looking at parking relief, we're saying, well, how many parking spaces do you need? And when you talk about like a bar or pub is, what's, what is it in the zoning code? So many per seat?
One per four seats?
One per four seats.
I'm guessing, I don't know if it's on my head.
So you kinda have to have a ballpark about how many seats to figure out how many parking spaces.
Well, first off, on the retail, um, retail store is not otherwise set for, it's one space per 500 square feet of gross floor area.
That's four spaces at 2,000 square feet.
Restaurant?
Restaurant, yeah, I guess.
Hotlodge? One per four seats, um, where no fixed seats. One, each 100 square feet of public floor area, there should be one parking.
That's also kinda what we're waiting on, to figure out how many people we're gonna be having inside. That's what we're waiting on for the church, to tell them how many spaces I would need.
So, so part of, part of what's gonna matter for us too is, it makes, it makes a big difference if you have off-site parking, if you have parking even at St. Joe's. So, I called the Ward Two Counselor before the meeting, 'cause it's in his ward and I figured I'd get his input on what his thoughts were. He had told me that many, many years ago, it was rendezvous and that-
That was Park Hill?
No, he said it was here first. And, that's what he said. And we got into a conversation about Dempsey's and prior uses and he said that the last bar, which I assume was Dempsey's, they used to rent the lot across the street, which used to be Claygoon Plumbing and Heating, which is now Martinez Road Construction.
It's still, it's still plumbing.
Plumbing.
Right, but they own it, right?
I'm not sure who owns it.
Oh, they do?
They own it.
No. So anyway, they, they used to rent spaces there for this.
Yeah, I was just handing up, too, by the way.
Is it, is that who it is?
When you get to that portion, yeah, if you wanna take public comment, Mr. Cody?
Uh, Mr. Cody, did you have some input on that?
Yes, absolutely. How you doing?
Good.
Okay, we can hear you.
Yeah, we, there was a time when it was, it was Mark's Pub, there was Friar Tux, there was the rendezvous back years ago, over there. And from the time of Friar Tux, Mark's Pub, um, there's another one in between, then Dempsey's. There was a time when the old owner would rent out some spaces, which became a hassle. And when I took ownership, I stopped that, because all my leases were leasing the spaces, there was no space available for anybody else. And that's the way it still is. So I wouldn't have any space to rent, I think this gentleman tried to contact us already about that, and at this time, we're just unwilling to lease.
Oh, oh, that's fine, I, I wasn't insinuating that he'd go there, I was just telling the history of the site, I'm sorry, Chris.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, we'll get, we'll, we'll get back to you, you can raise your hand again, we'll get the public comment, I just wanna get through these thoughts first.
Okay.
So, the point to that was, Council Boschman was saying that they used to park across the street and it was problematic. He said it was particularly problematic, he doesn't have a problem with, and, and I'm paraphrasing what he's saying here, 'cause he's not here, but he, he didn't have a problem with the idea of them using it as a restaurant lounge, whatever, unless there was gonna be any live entertainment. He said it always causes a problem with live entertainment.
No, we wouldn't have live entertainment.
Okay. 'Cause that was his one thing, he told me, he said, if they're gonna have live entertainment, he said every time there were like live bands, there would always be, he was saying there would be people going to the bathroom outside and causing all sorts of problems and it was a neighborhood issue, apparently. So, uh, he said it was tied directly to the nights when they had live entertainment. That, I just wanted to convey what the Ward Two Counselor had said. Uh, but generally speaking, had no real input negative, against it at least, regarding parking, other than to say that there isn't much in Claygoon. That was the gist of that, so.
Well, you can see on Jimmy Gaffney's plan on the screen there, there's about half of those spaces that used to be there, the lines are pretty much worn out now.
They are still there though, you can kinda see a few of them, there's five.
And it still is wide enough for the driving lane.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we need to, looking at what, what parking for, the restaurant isn't allowed by right use, we, but you're, you're here because of the parking. And you need to know how much parking is, is gonna be necessary and what seems reasonable.
For the restaurant?
For the restaurant, you're gonna, so we're gonna need to, like, how many employees? So, so you're gonna need like, well, the person in the convenience store, you're gonna need a person, how many people in the restaurant, so where are the employees gonna park? And then, how many seats are you going to have? As we've said, there's ramifications depending on number of seats, but for certain building and fire protection code requirements. So there might be some thresholds that you may or may not wanna-
Yeah.
-go over in your design. So if you looked at, what, 49, what was it, divided by, uh, 400?
I was, I think I was gonna have employee park at the church.
It's like 12 spaces.
So, so here, convenience store would be left or right on this?
Left.
So, convenience store would be 1,127 square feet, when we said one per 500, is it a floor, total floor area or does that include, remember how some of them don't include the storage space? We did, so it's one per 500 regardless, so that's- 'Cause I, 'cause I can do the math for the building, 'cause they have all the numbers on here.
Yeah, I think it's gross now.
All right, so let me-
Yeah, it is gross.
1,127 plus 258, so the warehouse is split between, oh, I can do the math, it's 12'7" by 7'9", so that's about 95 square feet, 1,125 plus 95 plus 104 plus 28 plus 39. So 14, 1,400 square feet, give or take, so that's only three spaces for the convenience store. So convenience store's three spaces. And the, let me scroll over here. This is 1,378 plus 45 plus 45 plus about 150-ish, so let's call it 1,800 square feet.
The old, um, the old structure on the, on the, on the store-
Yep.
There's two addresses on the first building, 40, 143 and 145, which they put together and they used to, 143 used to be the storage space for the store, it was the basement, and they had a right-of-way-
Can you do me a favor, if you're gonna keep taking calls to the microphone, 'cause we have someone virtually who probably can't hear you speak, so, and just state your name first.
My name is Lazaro Paulino and I am, uh, I live on 153 and I kinda know a little bit of the history of this, of the building.
Oh, you're next door?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm like to the left of the building.
All right.
I, um, back in the days, I was part of seeing all the commotion of the old Dempsey. So, we had to put up a fence, because people used to go behind the house.
I did see that, okay.
Before Claygoon Oil put up, Claygoon Plumbing put up the fences to get people away and that's when they shut down. So, to the left of the building, that, it has two addresses, 143 and 145, it used to be two spaces in the same building. And, um, to the left corner, it used to be the storage space, it used to be divided in the inside. And, um, it used to have a door towards the corner and they closed it down. So it used to be two entrances into that. And, um, around the corner, around the back of the building, they used to have right-of-way to load up to the store through the back. There's two, um, actually three doors in the back of the building. And then to, uh, it's still on this side, on the 145, 151, they are two spaces divided, it used to be the pool table area and then it used to be the bar area. And they asked to, they used to be doors in between to come from the, from the bar area to the pool area. And, um, so they're gonna take the wall down and turn it into one. Probably three years ago, I applied for a, a laundromat, but it was so expensive and, um, I, I didn't open it up, because it's the new laundromat system, it was too much money. But I think this project will bring, um, a lot of convenience to the area that probably 60% of the people walk. And, um, having the St. Joseph's house right next door, that most of the people walk everywhere, even in the winter, they just walk to Cumberland up the road, Park Hill, or they have to go down the street. So, that store there was very convenient for a lot of people around.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I have probably three parking spaces in front of my house that they used to, used to use before. I park inside, 'cause I have plenty of parking. But I think this, this, uh, this project would bring a lot, a lot of ease to a lot of people around, just to go, and I mean, you know, that, the whole area there is just-
Well, it's definitely, it's an allowed use, so we're just trying to figure out the parking.
And the convenience store is more like a walk kinda thing, I mean, you go in there and you take off, you're not gonna be there for three hours. So, the, the most concern about the parking is the, the restaurant area, which they are working with the church to-
Right, and then, yep.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The space calculation, I think, if I did it right, came out to, so the, the restaurant, Mike, you said was per floor area of usable space, or however you worded it?
One space per restaurant is one space per four seats.
Or-
Ventures are used, one space for each 10 linear feet.
There's another one.
Where no fixed seats are used, as in a museum.
Right. Yep, but that would be the-
For each 100 square feet of public floor area, thou shall be one-
So, so just for the sake of calculation, 'cause we don't know spaces, 1,378 square feet is the open public floor area, so that per 100 square feet is 14 spaces. 13.78. So, again, just for the ease of calculation, you're talking 17 spaces realistically is what zoning would require. So, um, my suggestion would be, so long as they can find and maintain off-site parking spaces, I think it's, I agree, I mean, it's a good use for the neighborhood, especially if you can beautify the outside of that building a little bit. You planning on doing some exterior work to it?
We have to get a building permit first, though.
Right, but what do you plan on doing to the facade, the front of the building?
We wanna fix it all up, make it attractive, you know?
Paint or new siding, or what are you gonna do?
I'm not sure what my contract is gonna do, actually.
Yeah, definitely. So we're talking 17 spaces minimum?
Again, based on my rudimentary parking calculations.
They usually have to provide a layout.
I mean, I think it makes sense to show us where you can get the spaces, meaning if you come to an agreement with St. Joe's for, let's say, 15 spaces on the far-left side of that parking lot.
Yeah, it'd be the far-left side.
Oh, absolutely, the closest to the entrance and closest to the, to your side. And you can show, you know, show their parking lot, show where they're gonna be and show us what you've, what agreement you've made. I, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Which, which St. Joseph's, are you talking about the, the church or the, the prior school building?
The church.
The church, okay.
Big parking lot.
With the big parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, so, and I, I believe there was, there's definitely a grade drop there, so it's how you're gonna access that parking from that end.
How are we gonna access it?
Right.
There's an entrance?
Yeah, there's a su-
It's like, it's like-
It goes down and around, hold on.
Typically, so, there was only one further down on Clarendon Street, and then one at the end on Woodland.
It's like on the side, it's like on the side of the parking lot.
I'll get it.
Alright.
So there's a chain link fence at that point, um, on the uphill side, that you'd have to, you know, walk out the driveway and just walk across the street. Plus you have curbside parking, um, on Daniel Street, you do on, um...
See, Paula, it's not that bad.
Columbus as well.
That's it, that, that's it right there. There's a, there's a park, there's a...
Yeah, but that's, see, the, let me see. Yeah, but the parking is below gray, like you need to get... Oh, yeah, so, but you're, the entrance is down there.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
So you take these, you, you know, let's say for the sake of our argument, they say, okay, at night, because that's when you're gonna need them, cause the convenience store can survive with the five on-street spaces. But let's say your agreement says, whenever the, and our permit would say this too, whenever the bar is open, let's say, you know, five o'clock to midnight, or whatever your hours are, you have those spaces available at the church. Let's say it's the ones right along this frontage, where you, you know, you just, you know, easily walk up this way, and then you got a sidewalk there, and I don't know, but I assume there's a crossing either here or...
Yeah, there is.
Further up.
Further up at that delta, I think.
Yeah, the problem is, there's no street scene up there, so, so, so you can't get there, but yeah. Oh, yeah, right here.
Yeah, right there.
Right here. So you, so there's, so there's, there's a crossing there. So, I mean, I would say, I have no problem with it if you could show that there is parking, because there are gonna be, although I, I think it's great to think that everyone's gonna walk there, you're gonna have people.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Um, so, so we need to show that there's a space for them, and it's not just on-street. Cause there's no parking signs here. And then, as Council Bushman had mentioned, as soon as you get past this building, those are all no parking signs up Clarendon Street. So, you have the five in front, and then you basically have the one-way lower side of Clarendon, what might be, you know, whatever, the side streets there. Well, anyway, there's not a lot, is, was the point.
Yeah, there really wouldn't be any on Woodland, that would be taken up by the multifamilies there.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot really anywhere, is the point to my conversation, so...
And we also don't wanna block the residence to the, uh, the, this residential driveway right abutting where the pub would be.
Yeah.
As well, so we wanna ensure that that's...
Could I ask something? While you have that street scene up, when it was active, and the gentleman, um, would know, where would you have loading? Is there a, a alley out to the rear?
This is the building behind the, it's on Daniel Street.
On Daniel Street?
Yeah. The, uh, Daniel Street to the back of the building.
You mean Woodland Street?
No.
Right behind, right on, on the corner of the,
Right here.
Yeah, yeah, there's no street scene. The street scene ends right here, so there's a gap right here, so I can't get, I, I serious, right here. I, I can't, I can't get there from the street scene, though.
I, uh, I, I went to the city, and the lady that I used to own, Maria, she used to have access to the back to load up in the back of the building. The new owner, they just moved the building probably a year ago, he's a friend of mine, so, um, we're not gonna have any issues with them letting us use it, because it's just gonna be once in a while, it's not gonna be...
I mean, that becomes, that becomes a problem for the property owners, not really for us. If they can't get back there, they'll have to load on the street, they'll have to use the on-street spaces for loading.
I take it you're not gonna have any, um, exterior trash? There's no place to put it.
They usually have the dumpsters are in the back of the building, there's a, there's some of the space in the back.
Well, that's what I was kinda like, you know, we're talking about that access easement, and if we're talking like a dumpster, this is site plan too, so it's like, we wanna make sure that it's not gonna, um, be located or interfere with the apartments or abutting it.
No, I wouldn't. It's kinda like... Yeah, it's like our own little space that blocks off... That, that's where the exit, um, the back doors are, and it leads to that little, it's like a little alley.
Paul, the DPW commissioner is suggesting Bing has a better street view.
It's suggesting, pardon?
Bing?
Oh, oh, okay, thanks, Nick.
Bing.
Yeah. I have so many windows open, I can't see what I'm doing. Alright, let's see what we got here. Oh, yeah. Let's see if, let's see if, if it'll let me go down here.
So all that furniture, right now, is all glass. They don't have any of that, that, um, that talk, like they used to have down there.
Alright, there we go.
Thank you, Nick.
Oh, looking.
It's a little dark, but...
So you need some lighting.
Yeah, okay, so... And what I was, what...
Space in between there and another couple of...
Yep.
And that multi, just to the left, that three-decker, you know that?
Yeah, so, what would you do for trash, obviously not having a dump, like a removal service per se? Like, can't fit a dumpster, right?
Put the trash out in the bag and then move it to the front?
Well, where, um, how a size of a dumpster would fit back there? Are they just trash bag, are they just trash barrels?
On the city.
For a commercial property?
Not for commercial...
That's not right.
No.
It's not supposed to be.
No, you won't have trash barrels, you won't have the commercial, I mean...
City shouldn't be picking up trash barrels for that, for this buil-, maybe the multifamily, but not for this building.
Right.
It's only for single to three family, four, three families?
Yeah, commercials, commercials, non-residential are on their own.
So, so, it's something you're gonna wanna look at, because obviously there's only so many places you can put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
And who's gonna empty it, you know, what service? We just wanna make sure, because it's a restaurant, that it's, that it's, uh, secured, um, and odor. Because you're very close to the apartment building.
Yeah. I mean, generally speaking, that, so, at least as far as this conversation goes, there's nothing that... There's nothing that affects our decision, other than providing off-street, off-street parking.
Well, let's see, uh... Well, why, it says special permit and site plan review. So the special permit part is for the relief. And site plan review is triggered for the parking plan.
Right, so, right, so what I, what I was saying was...
But it is a site plan review, so we look at it as a site plan.
Absolutely. No, 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 I understand. What I'm saying is the, you know, you know, the building is such that nothing, there's nothing on the site, other than facade changes. And the off-street parking issue, which
Right.
I need, which I want them to resolve, there's nothing that changes between this month and next month to just say, if, if the board wants to vote on it, we say, it's, it's okay, provided that you show us adequate parking during the hours of operation for the bar and restaurant in an off-site location, ideally, it looks like the closest is gonna be St. Joe's.
Yeah, it is.
Um...
Minimum of seventeen spaces.
Right, I would say, yeah, I mean, I put fifteen, give or take, but, um, you know, you've...
That's what they're waiting, they're waiting for me to get back to them, and...
So, so what I'm saying is, to the board, not to you, that I'm okay with making a motion, conditioning on providing us, providing us with adequate satisfaction of a parking plan, meaning you have to show us on their site where the parking spaces are.
Which one's gonna take?
And if they're not already marked out, if they're not already striped, we want you to, to put the parking stripes, and to put a sign there for your patrons.
Yeah.
Get St. Joe's permission, to put a sign, this is parking available to
X, Y, Z store.
Whatever, one forty-seven Daniels, or what, I'm Clarendon, one forty-three Clarendon, whatever it is. Um, so that they know when they come visit, this, it's okay to park here. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, I'm okay with voting in this, conditioned on them coming back to us in the future, showing us that proof.
And, and the trash, though?
Yeah, so you're gonna have to make a determination to us where the trash is, and if it is on that site, showing it on this, I got the wrong one, hold on. I got the wrong one again. Get it eventually. Showing it, you know, if you could fit it back here, and you, they can get a truck back there, and you think it's fine, then fine, show it there. If not, tell us how you're gonna get rid of trash.
Okay.
You're gonna keep it in the building in a separate location, and take it out every night? I don't, I don't know.
Some people bring it home.
Yeah, I mean...
Don't know. But depending on how much trash you have, if some things is kept interior, and then you, and then you deal with it. Uh, others are, if you can't fit out, what's other type of service aside from, you know, a large dumpster that won't maybe adequately fit down there, you're not backing up a truck into that alleyway.
Yeah, no.
Then, I, right, what means their service you would use to that? And receptacles, that would be covered and secure.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like...
Paul, Mr. Cody has a hand up.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Cody, I did say we'd get back to you, too. Alright, go ahead.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, um, I'm not trying to stand in this gentleman's way by any means. I'm all about business and moving forward. I just don't wanna have to deal with the riffraff that I've had to in the past. Um, with having to get cars moved from the police, having to pay to get them towed, having to appease, you know, I have to appeal to all my tenants, I mean, I got six tenants in that space. At any given time, there could be fifteen cars already that are occupied, and if they leave for work, there would be somebody parking there to go party next door, and then I'd have to put the fire out, and I just don't wanna have any issues with that. So if this gentleman can find parking somewhere else, it'd be great, and just leave me out of it. I mean, I would, I'd like to have a relationship with the guy, but I just can't afford, I just can't afford to have anyone parking.
Chris, which property you own directly across the street?
I own, I own, yeah, the one forty-two, where Cl- where Klaygon Plumbing is, and there's three apartments.
Is that many tenants in that building? What are the tenants in that building?
It's two commercial spaces, and then three upstairs, and then I own the building.
Oh, there's residential units in the building too, okay, okay.
I own the two family next door also, so I have, I have them parking and parts of that, too.
Absolutely, that makes sense. No, no, I was just curious, it, I didn't expect there to be that many tenants, yep.
I have a comment towards that.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Alright.
Um, did you have anything else, Chris, before we get to?
No, I just, no, I just wanna just be clear that I'm not standing in the way, I just wish, I just want the parking to be addressed, and then we can move forward, so...
I, I think it's, I think it's, I don't think it helps the cause any, and we've run into this a lot with private property rights. There's unfortunately, a, a big issue between what we can control and what we can't control, but I do understand, and I do think we can add a permit condition, that, that no one parks, none of his, patrons park in your lot across the street, cause that's the most likely one they will try and park in, most likely. Commercial lots tend to, you know, gravitate to parking. That way, if there are continued issues, we can call him back for the special permit and say, don't do that. So, we'll, we'll try that.
Alright, I appreciate all the help, and I do have Brian's number. I will reach out to him myself and speak to him personally.
Great, thanks, Chris.
Good luck.
Thanks for your patience.
And, you can respond now.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm going to have security, so I can make sure that, I tell my security, don't, don't let them, don't let anyone park across the street, and if you see them do it, make them leave.
Absolutely, that'd be awesome. And, and, and I think, like I had just mentioned to him, I think it's, we have to write up a decision for this, cause it's a special permit.
Yeah.
And one of the conditions will be that your patrons don't park across the street in the parking lot.
Yeah, I'll make sure that it's clear.
That way, we, that way we have the, cause normally, the problem is, police come, and then he has to call them, tell them they're not his, they have to tow. At least if we make this a permit condition, if it constantly becomes an issue, we can call you back to our board and say, do it or lose the restaurant, so...
Yeah, I'll make sure that it's clear that no one can park across.
Okay.
And again, we're certainly looking at the minimum number of parking spaces. So four parking spaces outside on the street, or for anybody, they're not your designated parking spaces on, outside the convenience store. The building area, right, so...
I would say the fifteen spaces at St. Joe's are probably a minimum.
Yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen, try and get twenty if you can.
I'm gonna tell them twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, because you might never need them, but it's always safer to go above and beyond, especially, you know, if you, if you're gonna have, and you'll have to double-check the amount of people, but if it is forty-nine, like Mike said, or ninety-nine, like you said, if it's ninety-nine, that can be
You're gonna have to...
A significant strain.
I think I told them two dozen, but I, I gotta get back to them to confirm it, and they said it'd be...
At St. Joe's, you mean?
Yeah. Two dozen, two dozen spots.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna have your, again, accommodate your other employees and things as well.
Yeah, that's why I wanted it a little more.
You don't want them parking right in front of the store.
Take up your patron's... And I tell you from experience, you're gonna wanna negotiate that now, meaning if you even think that you're gonna need more than that, negotiate on the high end.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna be harder, you know, once you get it, if the, you just, just, just solve the problem now, get it in writing, make sure it's a, it's somewhat of a long-term lease, meaning not just the year.
Yes, of course.
So, we'll be looking for the parking plan in an agreement, and it's gonna also be based upon the number of
Of seats?
You're gonna seats.
Okay.
On the interior. So, we have this, pretty much this minimum number, but you need to figure that out.
Yep.
And, and the other thing you need to understand, too, is your permit to allow these uses are only gonna exist as long as you maintain those spaces. Meaning, if you lose those spaces someday, you need to find them somewhere else, or come back to modify the permit.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you won't, you'll be in violation of special permit conditions.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay.
That board members have other questions?
I think it's a, a great little project, and it'll be an, uh, an improvement to the neighborhood. And I do like what the gentleman said about the St. Joseph's house. I think that practically everybody that lives in that development will enjoy having a, a convenience store there, and they will walk there. So I, I think it's a win-win situation on that corner. It's gonna look better, to top it all off.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
And you'll have to submit the, those agreements as, as a condition that would probably be prior, prior to you pulling any building permits.
The lease agreement for the parking.
The lease agreement for the permit.
Okay, okay.
You have to submit that to the board, based upon what you've considered of what you're gonna be pulling for a building permit.
Alright.
So, that would have to be submitted to us before then.
Okay, that's alright.
Um, and, and I had mentioned, um, you had mentioned you're gonna do some exterior work on the front of the building.
Exterior, yeah.
So one of the permit conditions would be repair the exterior siding, whether that's completely repaint it or replace it. So, paint it over or replace it, and, and get rid of the old signs that, that there, that's there now and all that.
Not there no more.
What's that?
It, it doesn't look the same from what you saw.
Okay, so... Yeah, I thought I remembered there being a sign up there, but anyway.
Yeah, there was.
Okay, but whatever your new signs are gonna be, make sure they look nice. And I assume you're gonna have two signs, one for the convenience store?
Yes.
Just make sure they look nice, and just on the building. No freestanding signs, no hanging signs outside, no, nothing else.
Okay.
Um, the one permit condition that, that I, we've had done in the past, and we occasionally forget here and there, but it's fresh on my mind, is to make sure, we have a problem with convenience stores, particularly with gas stations, where they like to put signs all over the building about sales, and, you know, Coke, two for, two for ten dollars, or whatever. None of that outside the building.
That's fine.
Just the facade, it, as much signs as you want inside the building, but nothing on the front edge of the building.
Okay.
No advertisements.
Yeah, it kinda detracts when you see the windows all covered up with advertisements.
People that do one or two or three of them are fine, but the problem is, as soon as they do one or two, there's fifty signs everywhere, so... It's just easier just to say, keep them inside.
There is a, I think, code requirement for a certain percentage of coverage, like, not to cover.
Okay.
Stay with that. Um, and I know he mentioned signs, once you do find the par- the parking, but maybe he could put a sign out front, like parking for X pub, or whatever.
Yeah, to let them know.
Let them know.
Yes.
So that's when they're driving up to it, they can see that.
Yeah, so they don't park...
So they'll try to park there, and then get told inside, where'd you park?
Yeah.
Alright, is there any other, do we have any department comments?
No.
Uh, unless, well, Nick Erickson commented to me, just confirmed that, as we saw, there, there had been parking spaces out in front striped before, and they can be easily striped again, so...
Yeah, I can see like a, so, so you're aware, so that's where the end of the first parking space is, a certain distance you have to keep back from an intersection.
Okay.
So that's why, that's there and not closer to the intersect, there's not another space in front of it.
Alright.
Okay, and there is a five, just for your knowledge, is a five-foot setback from driveways. So, the parking next to the abutting driveways, or people parking on, on-street.
You said five foot?
Five foot. I believe on the city code.
Alright.
Knowledge is power, just keep those things in, yeah, keep that in mind. Listen to that.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. A motion is made, and seconded to close the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I know when I see that image, and I see the traffic island, it, it wouldn't hurt if you wanted to adopt an island.
If, if you ever have any desirability to maintain that, to cut the grass, or plant something nice there, or weed it, or whatever, we would very much appreciate it, cause as you know, the city does not have a lot of manpower. So if you wanna make it look nice for your thing, you can even put that your business adopted the island, you can talk to our DPW about that, but, anyway. Um, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan for one forty-three, one forty-nine Clarendon Street. Um, it's subject to a few conditions. The first is, uh, repair, uh, replace, repair, or repaint the exterior siding. Uh, show on a separate plan, um, parking availability during hours of operation um, of the bar slash restaurant lounge, whatever they're calling it, um, at least fifteen spaces. I think for the sake of what we're doing, ignore the at least fifteen spaces, let's say at least twenty.
Yeah.
Because you, because you said that, I wrote fifteen a while ago. Um, as well as providing a lease agreement with the, with them, even if it's a draft for now.
Yeah, I will.
But the understanding, you have to maintain an agreement for off-site parking.
Yep, the agreement has to exist as long as you want the building, the business to exist, yep. Yep, the agreement has to exist as long as you want the business to exist, yep. Show a trash location, either onsite, or tell us where your trash is going to be, what your plan is. Based upon Council Bush's request, in your agreement, no live music.
No live music, no.
Perfect. No parking in the private lot across the street?
No.
Perfect. Create some new signage, if you're going to, on the building for your two new businesses. No advertisements on the exterior of the building for, you know, the convenience store products. The only exterior sign that should be there is a potential parking directional location sign for where your off-site parking is.
Okay.
And if you, there are provisions that if you do put any signage on the, like, a city sidewalk, like sandwich boards for advertisements, there's a permit you need for that. And probably have to take it in and out, and still allow a certain distance for pedestrians across.
All right.
Things like that.
Okay.
So. All right, that being said, is there a motion?
That was a motion.
Motion's made, is there a second?
A second.
And a second, all those in favor, and roll call. Say aye, if approved, and, yeah, and all those opposed, say oppose. Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Ah, there you are. Paula?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Fantastic.
Thank you, guys.
Do you have any questions for us?
Can I get a list of those things that we talked about?
Yeah, I just sent it to Mike, and he can forward it to you if he wants. Or, more importantly, probably, just when we write it up, we can give it to him.
Yeah, I could stop by any day.
Right, well, let me take some time to decipher Paul's writing, and make it neat.
That's fine.
And I'll forward it on to you.
All right.
All right.
My writing is not meant to be shared. It is not neat, but thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with everything, hopefully it's very successful, I hope it is.
Good luck.
All right.
Thank you for speaking around.
The next item on our agenda for a public hearings is a special permit and site plan review for Northeast Solar Development LLC on Alpine Road.
Can you stand up, too sore? We made you wait too long.
High-scale solar array.
All right, let me pull this one up, hold on.
And did Mike send you my comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna hand out a few things. The last hearing that you had, is that the site of a form of fluids linoleum shop? Well, it would have to be before the
Linoleum?
It would have to be before the '40s, because I think the rendezvous was like '50s, something like that?
I went to St.
This is way before the rendezvous was at Park Hill.
I never knew that. I used to go.
Yeah, I couldn't even tell you, it's the building that follows the curve of Clarendon Street when you go down. Is that a form of pharmacy as well, years ago? It was a convenience store at some point.
A convenience store, and most recently.
Yeah, I don't know.
In Simon's shop.
Apparently, a lot of businesses have been there, from what I've heard so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this a new plan, or is this the one that you submitted?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Something I said.
Thank you.
Well, you're lucky, then. Second plan I want to give you, still have. Also listening to the previous one for that, it reminds me of the balance of rights of community owners. Not in my backyard is a real thing. All right, so this is solar. Thank you. I'll leave you a couple of units with all the attachments.
Right. The very last one was, didn't make it into the drop box for this, that Paul has opened.
Oh, it's a swivel.
Okay. Good, good.
Thank you, this is helpful.
Oh, good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Jamie Rowe, a paleo lawyer, registered engineer, surveyors, and environmental scientist. My client this evening is Northeast Solar Development. I'm sure all of you remember, or most of you remember, this piece of property, where it was a previously approved solar project. Almost identical to what was submitted, or you adopted, revised the plan according to your licenses. And it was approved, and it got extended quite many, many times, to the point where it forced us to reapply for this permit, because there was a zoning change. You have a new solar bylaw in town, and it requires a special permit and site plan approval. That's why we're here before you this evening.
Could you provide a summary of the size of the project, and?
Just trying to get organized with all the paperwork.
Take your time.
So the project summary that was submitted as part of the application reads as follows. Alpine Road Solar Project Narrative. The project site is located on the west side of Alpine Road, and the south side of an unimproved portion of McIntyre Road here in Pittsburgh. The project consists of approximately 42.9 acres. Site is vacant, with most of the property containing wooded areas, with a wetland system along the western boundary. Northeast Solar Development LLC proposes to construct a solar panel array on a proposed grass field. The solar array, system size, is proposed to be 6.6 megawatts DC, 2.7 megawatts AC, along with a 2.7 megawatt AC, four-hour duration, in energy storage as a battery system. There are two locations that include a switchgear transformer pad and energy storage container. Access to the project will be via 35-foot wide access and utility easement through the land of Quatico Holdings. That's basically the radio tower site off of Alpine Road, and that will connect directly to the solar project. Northeast Solar Development anticipates a construction start date of November 1st, 2022, this year, if everything goes well with the permitting. And they will finish this project during the summer of 2023. Usually, this size system takes anywhere between six and eight months to construct, based upon my experience.
And as you're well aware, Alpine Road was recently paved.
Yes, it was. And I've had conversations with Nick Erickson about that, other things on the site as well. And I proposed to Nick that he would include a condition, that if there's any damage to Alpine Road, it would be a condition of approval, that this development would fix it, to his satisfaction or the satisfaction of the DPW Engineering Division. And I understand he put that in his recommendations to you for this evening.
Excellent.
I submitted also to Mike O'Hara via email, the project narrative, the lease agreement. There's a lease agreement that goes back with Alpine Ridge LLC, previous owner of the radio tower site, Bill Masek, the manager of that LLC. So that document is still in full force and effect. I also submitted to Mike online, a copy of the pilot agreement that is in existence as well, with the Pittsburgh City Council and the assessors office. Also, an easement plan through the radio tower property. Originally, it's on record, it's a 50-foot, I believe it's a 50-foot easement access and utility. And through discussions with the current applicant and the owner of the radio towers, that shrunk down to a 35-foot easement, to be apportioned, 15-foot access and 20-foot utility. That's also in file as well. You also asked for a one-line or three-line electrical drawing, and I received today the one-line or three-line that was submitted to the utility, which I gave to Mike via email. It has all the components on it, if you understand electrical engineering, good to you.
Does Unitil still require the stupid five-pole step-down?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, God, it looks so terrible.
It does, it does, but there's reasons for it, and there's safety reasons for it. So I had the same reaction years ago when we first started designing them, and then when it was explained to me, makes perfect sense.
I guess so.
So we did submit that plan.
But why does National Grid not do that? Because I've seen, the one in Rutland doesn't have a step-down.
Yeah, again, every utility has their own rules and regulations.
As a matter of fact, I think the one in Rutland, one of the big ones in Rutland, it's all underground until you get to the street, and then it goes up from, like, you look at places like that, and you say, "Oh, that makes, that looks great," but in Unitil.
Yep.
Very large stormwater plan, right?
So, very large stormwater plan, sure. Basically, we are changing the site from a wooded site to a grass field. And when that happens, you're going to increase the rate of runoff, and the volume of runoff as well, I believe. So the way we handle that is, and you're familiar with the detention basins, we have a series of three basins on the property, that basically, stormwater will sheet flow into these basins. We believe it's a conservative design. Nick Erickson did review it, and has some recommendations, very minor tweaks, and we're happy to do that as well. He recommended a conditional approval based upon a stormwater review he did, and we're happy to make those tweaks to his satisfaction.
Still hear from him in a little bit.
Yep, oh, he's here? Okay, fantastic, didn't know that.
Yep.
The panel detail, you asked for all this information within your bylaw. It's very difficult to give you a final panel detail, so to speak, because typically, they'll go out to bid, and the prices of these panels go up and down. They'll pick and choose what's best for the project, but also with the cost as well. So I do have a panel that they gave me, but that might change, so I wouldn't bank on that. As I said, the access is coming from Alpine Road through the radio tower site. That's the best place to come. It does have, does not have frontage on Alpine Road, it has frontage on McIntyre. And McIntyre, at this location, is a paper street, and it's used as a pathway, a walkway for all the residents that go back and forth. This road is never going to be improved, as far as I'm concerned. It's too steep, and it would take too much of an investment to do that. So the frontage we have on McIntyre is going to, is unimproved. And so that gets back to my comment, Paula's comment in the email that I received from Mike O'Hara. I know the bylaw has very specific setbacks, front yard, side yard, and rear yard. And so I'm curious to know why you're recommending a 100-foot setback from McIntyre, which I consider a front yard setback. Now, keep in mind, I'm fine with a 100-foot setback, if that's what you want. We would basically pull that back from McIntyre, give you the 100-foot setback, and then we would add panels elsewhere on the site. But we thought we met the bylaw when we proposed a 50-foot setback off of McIntyre. We did meet setbacks of 100 feet, all the way through the site, from the panel itself to the lot lines, 100-plus.
So, I'll just mention, so the access point isn't the front, you know, depending what the frontage is. So the frontage is whatever the code says the frontage is.
Okay.
So, there's a, you know, if the building commissioner says Alpine Road is the frontage, then that's the, that would be aspect, and McIntyre would be the side. But if McIntyre is the frontage, then it's
Correct.
You know, so it's looking at the front and side setbacks appropriately, not.
So I basically, we basically showed the front yard setback off of McIntyre.
So, right, so let's make a determination that McIntyre's the frontage, and the plan looks fine. Because I'd rather be closer to McIntyre, which is unimproved, and you cannot get down there, versus
Well, I'm not
further away from Alpine, which is what it is.
I'm just
Well, that's exactly what we're saying, I mean.
It's not us to make the frontage, it's what this building commissioner
No, the only frontage, the only access frontage this property has is McIntyre. So we can, we can unilaterally say as a board, McIntyre's the frontage, the plan looks fine.
I know, but I'm just saying, all the project is called Alpine.
And I think this conforms to what you just read. I
So our intention was to do that. It's up to the board, the board can decide on what they want, but our intention was to hold a 50-foot setback minimum from the sideline of McIntyre to the edge of the array, and then hold a minimum of 100 feet throughout the entire site for the abutters themselves. And there are limited abutters. One of the plans I submitted to you this evening up top is, basically, from the city of Pittsburgh, assessors, GIS, so to speak, with an aerial photo. And I'm sure everybody can identify where the site is. And you can see, there is not, in a butter, that has a developed site anywhere near this array. If we do maintain the 50-foot setback from McIntyre, we know on the opposite side of that road, it's all woods. And we also know, I believe, that McIntyre Road will never be developed.
When we did, when we did those A&R's for the gentleman that built at the end of McIntyre.
Mm-hmm, yep. You see his house here.
Because this is a, this is a public way, correct, McIntyre, even though it's unimproved?
It's a paper street.
Right.
It's not a public way, so it's a little different.
Is it, well, I know it's, is it paper, or is it public?
So it's a paper street, undeveloped, and basically, by mass law, basically, each abutter on each side owns to the center line, and there's an easement that exists.
But not all of McIntyre Road is a paper street?
Correct.
Well, no, no, but this is the dead-end side. It is not a public way.
Right.
It's not a public way.
No, no.
So what I was saying was, when we did that A&R, he had, like, four lots worth of frontage.
Right, combined.
And we allowed him to use that driveway as his frontage. So he comes in, kind of on the side, and in.
Yeah.
With the, I wish I could read the minutes, but with the understanding that it's never gonna get improved anyway, because of the gray.
Right, but is it, I know, is it an unimproved, I'll call it, part of a, is it owned by the city at all?
Do you have the list, Mike, where it says where it ends? I bet it's gonna say Alpine to, Alpine to Williams, but.
If I had access to the P drive, but I don't, this is my own laptop, not the work one.
I mean, whether it gets developed or not is unimportant. If you're taking that tack, then you're saying McIntyre's the frontage, then they only need to be 50 feet from the frontage.
Yes.
Perfect.
That's what I'm saying, I just want to confirm that it's just an unimproved, owned-by-the-city way?
Is not, I don't think it is owned by the city.
Or is it truly just paper, paper, where, where, Paper Road has no frontage, technically, for A&R?
Not for A&R, because you need to have frontage up.
You're getting
I know, I know, I'm just saying, and then it's not frontage.
You're getting caught up on something that's so non-
Well, I'm not saying it's
It makes the most sense for that, for that side to be the closest than for Alpine.
I understand what makes sense, I'm trying to think of the legality portion of it, okay? I'm just kind of going through the motions here.
Right, I get you.
I understand the perspective of, yes, it makes sense, but it's like, I'm trying to back that up with the, with what it is on
I understand what you're trying to
I'm just saying, I don't think it matters.
In this particular case, the lot itself only has frontage on a paper street. But we have an access easement that was granted by the abutter. It was actually granted by the same owner, because this, these properties were contiguous under the same ownership by Bill Masek. And Bill basically sold the radio tower business and the property to the current owner, but granted himself an easement prior to the conveyance. So it was all legal, it was done by an attorney, and it was renegotiated, so to speak, by the new applicant. So McIntyre is the frontage, although it's not a public way. That's the frontage of the lot, but it's not necessary to build that road in order to build this project, because we have an access easement.
Correct.
But I do understand and appreciate the comment. Interestingly enough, I believe this was the first solar project approved in Pittsburgh and extended.
So, on that note, I was gonna say, for purposes of comparison, do you remember, you guys did, you did Ashby State, or Ashby?
We did.
Do you remember, comparison-wise, how big this compares to that, or?
I don't.
Okay.
But, you know, comparatively speaking, I believe, in fact, it's right on the plan, this is a 2.7 megawatt AC, and, so it's a 5.5 meg project, is what it basically boils down to.
Right, I know, I'm trying to, I don't know the size off the top of my head from Fisher Road. I thought
That might have been twin.
Fisher was two-ish?
I thought it was three.
I think it was more than that. I think it was more than that.
Yeah.
Not as big as this.
Yeah, not as big as this.
So somewhere between Fisher and Ashby State, because Ashby State was much bigger than this.
And had two...
Two projects that were next to each other.
Yeah, right.
The combined size, though, right, was bigger, I would imagine. But, anyway, that's fine, we don't know. I, I was just trying to compare it size-wise in my head, but...
Yep. It's important to note that this property is zoned row residence, which is, which is an allowed use on this, for the zone, which allows us to get the special permit and site plan approval.
Yes, and that's...
The, the soiny lot right above it, that must just be a haylot, right?
It is.
Soiny, haze, yeah.
It is, it is. And I, and I spoke with him, we were going to ask him for an access easement to his property if it didn't work out with the, the current owner of the radio towers. And he was agreeable. He didn't have to, so. Rather keep that. And I believe that I was purchased by this, from the city of Fitchburg, too.
That's right. He was, because there was, well, there's an APR on it still.
Yep.
And they had trouble years ago getting anyone to hay it.
Yep.
So they put it out to bid, and Steve was the highest bidder.
Sure.
And he continues to hay.
He does, yep.
So there's a hundred-foot setback from all of the sides?
There is, yes. From the property line to the solar panels, absolutely. Yep. And the entire project will be enveloped by a chain-link fence, security fence, eight-foot high.
Do they still do the gap at the bottom?
So it, in every community, there's a different requirement for the fence, based upon their experiences. We'd be happy to...
I thought we did that with the other ones, no?
I, I don't remember that.
With, yeah, to let the critters...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, and I'm pretty sure that was a client requi, I mean, an applicant request, not a, like, a, that's not a me thing, that's, does the conservation commissioner...
I remember the conserv, for Ashby State, that was suggested by the commission.
Okay. If that's the case, then maintain what we do. And on that note, I'm sure you, you're aware of this, with the other projects, we've required reclamation bonds?
Sure, yes.
So that'd be another condition?
Absolutely, absolutely agree with that. And, and keep in mind, on this particular project, we limited the hours of construction. So I would recommend using the same hours of construction for this project.
You limited them where?
We limited the hours, the start time and, and end of work time.
In your documents here?
In the, in the original decision.
Oh, okay, okay. I would assume, unless you disagree with any of them, we would mirror the conditions in the original approval.
Yep.
Okay.
I do like the fence idea, though, because you are, in the opening comments, is going from like forest to more of a pasture.
Sure.
So, you know, to accommodate the wildlife aspects.
Fence gap, for lack of a better word.
Right.
Nick Erickson answers the question. It is a public way, noted as impassable in the street list.
Okay, not a paper street.
Nick, if you want to say something, you can. Don't feel like you have to, but if you want to.
What's that?
And it's official frontage.
It's official frontage. We could petition the city to build a road.
Perfect. That'll go far. Nick, did you want to say something, or no?
Just wanted to add that it, it is a public way, all the way through, from Stickney to Williams.
Good.
And that section is noted as impassable, but of course, the city has no plans to build a road there. I mean, it's a public way, but it's, it is relatively rough, there's wetland concerns, lots, we have no plans to improve that section of roadway.
And Mr. Neves, who built that building, put rocks in, you know, blocking that way.
I know we had this conver, the reason why I brought it up is I know we had this conversation when we did that, because that was a special approval, because he didn't have frontage without that, using that as his frontage.
Right, correct.
So...
Right, so we considered him combining those four lots. We, we designated that as a rear lot, and then we were able to shrink the amount of frontage required down to, I think, forty, seventy-five feet from like a hundred, a hundred and seventy-five, or something like that.
Something like that, Nick, yeah.
Yeah.
And you had an engineered plan showing the improvements to the way, done, done by Alton Stone, I remember.
Right.
Right, we, we did require him to approve McIntyre for that little stretch from Alpine down to his driveway.
Right here, and then there's stones right there.
Yep, it stops.
Yep, thank you, Nick.
So you've looked at the other aspects and, of course, in the new permit regulations?
Yeah, we did. The other, the other, let's see, we, we gave you the panel detail, the operation and maintenance agreement. We did put an operation and maintenance agreement into the drainage report for the, the stormwater management.
Mm-hmm.
It's my experience that the operation and maintenance agreement, moving forward, once it's built, will be submitted to the board for approval. They typically sub that out once it's built and they turn on the switch, and an independent company comes in with their own operations and maintenance agreement. So that can be adopted by the planning board and revised, you know, if you, if you'd like revisions to it.
Well, isn't that something that gets recorded traditionally?
It does, it gets recorded at the registry deeds, sure. Yep, yep.
And I, well, and Nick, I have a question for you. Do you, do you, does any of the stormwater aspects or O and M need third-party review?
I don't think so. So we, we had a similar solar field off of Fisher Road that Whitman and Bingham did the design for. Jamie was responsible for that project, prior to then becoming Haley Ward. That one turned out fantastic, there's been no issues since. So I think as long as the board conditions this approval such that he addresses the concerns that I've expressed, I don't see any need for a third-party review here.
Thank you, Nick.
Mike, are there any other department comments?
Nope, nope, that's it.
Are there any public comments remotely?
I don't, there's no one remotely, just board member, just Amanda.
Amanda, do you have, do you have any questions or comments?
Sorry, I couldn't find my mute button. No, no. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I will make one more statement, just so you understand the conservation commission's jurisdiction here, because there are wetlands on the property. We designed this, the original design and this design makes sure that all improvements, even the drainage basins, are located outside the buffer zone. So there's no jurisdiction whatsoever.
Perfect.
Are we good?
I recall that this was, went to the commission years ago and several more times since, even though it was all buffer zone work, but it disturbed enough area?
So what we ended up doing with the conservation commission is, there's an erosion control bylaw in town.
Yeah.
And there was a dual responsibility, either the planning board or the conservation commission could issue the erosion control permit. And since we were before the planning board with this site plan approval, we decided to give the conservation commission jurisdiction over the erosion control bylaw, so they have input as well. And I went before them and they had, they issued the permit, they had no questions. And that permit doesn't expire, to my knowledge. I remember getting an email from Mike that there was no expiration date on that.
And is this less extensive than the previous one?
It's just a, it's just a revision complying with the bylaw that exists today. It's basically the same project, different panels. I think we used the 10K panels before, and they're not using them because they've stopped production.
Did we just give them an FYI?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to go before them and have a conversation to remind them, and happy to.
You'll be at next meeting anyway.
Sure, great.
Is there, regarding the, the timber on the property?
Timber on the property.
Timber on the property. So do you need any...
Getting cut.
What's that? Right, do you need any other permits regarding that?
Yes. So what we're going to be doing is filing a NEPDES permit and a SWIP document as well. And that's a, that's a construction-related permit filed online with the EPA. And we need some more information before we can file that. So we plan on filing that at least 45 days prior to the, the proposed November 1 construction start.
Thank you for the clarification, because like, how much of the, most of the property will be cleared?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Forty-two point nine acres and is a...
Exactly. I don't have the, the exact, but for the NEPDES permit, it's, it's triggered by one acre of cutting and land disturbance. And we're well over that.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All righty. I think that's all the questions I have.
All righty, when you are...
Of course, you know, routine things would be, probably going to have only like one or two people, a site visit typically is on, like, monthly or onsite, so there's not a lot of traffic generated.
Yep. Originally, when we permitted this project, there was a gentleman across the street who came and opposed the project, not so much because of the project, but because of the graffiti on that building, the radio tower building. We took care of that a long time ago.
Yes. I mean, Freddie Call, we had to keep bringing that up about the graffiti. And where would be any type of generator or anything that would...
Yep, right in the middle of the site.
In the middle.
Yep, right smack in the middle of the site.
It's at the top of the, it's at the top of the array, right, right?
Just above the basin.
Oh, I'm looking at the battery, so the battery storage is right when you first get there? And the other ones in the middle of the site?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Oh, transformer pad, okay. So it's all the way to the back of the field?
Yep.
But in the middle of the site?
So everybody's clear, so that we know that there's...
Paul on the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at the actual, it's right here.
Okay, thank you.
And then up here is the battery storage, which is right at the beginning of the solar panel array.
Yep.
With another, actually, another transformer pad, too.
Yep.
Right here. So there's two transformer pads, there's one here. Oh, is this, oh, it's the same thing, duplicated. There's a battery and a transformer pad, and there's a battery and a transformer pad. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so two locations.
Yeah, there's one at the beginning of the site, right here, and then there's one in the back, back middle, back third. So that one, that one only becomes something, is if this soiny site ever gets developed in the future, if that APR ever gets bought out, or whatever.
Any further questions?
Yeah, all right. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion's been made with a second to close the hearing, hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, discussion?
Make a motion to approve this special permit and site plan for Northeast Solar Development, excuse me, Large Scale Solar Array, subject to presentation of a reclamation bond, mirroring the applicable conditions in the original special permit, or site plan, I think it is, right?
Site plan.
Yeah. Creating the, the typical fence gap, whatever would be in the bottom of the chain-link fencing. Record the O and M maintenance agreement, satisfy the DPW's concern to the DPW's satisfaction, and then any damage to Alpine Road to the pavement will be repaired to the DPW's satisfaction if any occurs.
There we have it. Motion's been made, second with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say opposed. And I'll take roll call. Hold it a second. Ellen?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
All right.
Fantastic, thank you.
Great. Well, good job on doing all your homework.
Is this permit good for another 15 years?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I am going to amend that, and you're going to be fine with this, but just to add the time tables that Jamie had said.
Yep.
Starting roughly November, finishing, I'll say, beginning of 2024, something like that. That way, if you guys come back, if you need some extension, if you need an extension, you can ask for it.
Perfect.
But that way it doesn't take 10 years to finish.
Yep.
Thank you for, thank you for reminding me.
And, and about that project, we just received the order of conditions. So the Concom issued a revised order of conditions for the Woodlands Estates. So that's underway.
Yay, progress.
Fingers crossed.
Progress.
Progress, progress. Everybody have a fantastic night.
Thank you.
You too, Jamie, thank you.
Take care.
So we do have some other bus, other business. We have update on CHC and Drupanos Drive repaving. It's more of a, kind of an FYI concern.
The, the skinny on that is, after last month's meeting, when everyone was upset with what CHC was proposing repaving Drupanos, a question was asked, well, is Unitil doing, planning on doing any gas work there? So that was checked out, fortunately, no, and not in the general area, but not on Drupanos Drive. And then a question was asked, well, what about wastewater? Does DPW plan any sewer separation work? And there's no sewer separation work, but there is sewer repair that is proposed in their, their usual maintenance. And that had been scheduled, according to their contractor, and the name escapes me, Nick, you'll, you'll remember it.
Uh, Polito. Polito.
Right. For 2024, but through the DPW commissioners' intercession, that's going to be bumped up to within the next two or three months, Nick?
Yep, that's what I'm being told. So I've been told that by the end of, essentially by the end of September, the repairs should be completed and the lining should be scheduled. So as long as paving is a plan within that timeframe, I think we'll be, we'll be off the hook as far as causing the delays.
And from September until November, you still have a couple of months' worth of paving weather, when the plants will be open. So Davenport, if they hold to Davenport's quote, Davenport Paving's quote, you could very well see Drupanos Drive repaved before the end of the year.
So, and the, and the, right, and the city was also going to contribute some excavation work?
Yeah, so we're, we're still planning on assisting with that whenever Davenport decides to give us the green light.
Okay.
So, Nick, I don't know if you, or if you want to have Mike, but if someone can reach out to CHC or Davenport and just try and, as best we can, kind of coordinate, you know, let them know you're working on some stuff, and, so that he can put it in his account.
Now, it sounds like if you're talking three months, they're not going to be able to pave, I'm guessing, before plants close this year. But maybe we can coordinate to have this work done, and if it doesn't overlap, to see if Davenport can do it first thing in the spring.
Yes, I can certainly reach out. We might be able to get it taken care of by the end of September, which would give Davenport and DPW essentially a month, month and a half or so to get out there and do the work. I don't know what CHC's schedule is like. I don't know what timeframe they're trying to push Davenport to complete the work during. But I'll definitely send out the email and say, hey, this is the sewer work that's outstanding. This is the timeframe we're looking to complete it within. You know, let us know if you can get to that this season, or if it's something that needs to wait until next spring.
That'd be awesome, because my, and I very much appreciate you working double time to try and figure this out. You've done a great job. My concern is that when you're dealing with a nonprofit or a not-for-profit, that at the end of this fiscal year, that money might not exist anymore. So that's why I'm trying to make sure we can at least get them to commit to a timeframe ahead of time, even if they say, yes, we'll do it in the spring. I just want something in writing from either Davenport or from CHC saying, yeah, oh, yeah, we're on it. That's all I want.
Yeah, understood. And I'll reach out and try to make that happen.
Is this, this is the image you sent me, Nick, when we were emailing last week. Is that red line there just the total extent of the sewer?
So what you're looking at here is what Unitil sent me for their gas line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I don't have a figure for the sewer. There's two point repairs that need to be made, and then there's lining that needs to be done for the stretching between the point repairs. So we can do just the point repairs, but the concern is that when we go to actually do the paving work, all the heavy equipment's going to cause the relatively poor-conditioned sewer mated to collapse. So that's why we'd like to do the point repairs and the sewer lining work to restore the basically structural integrity of that pipe and make sure it doesn't collapse when Davenport goes to do their work.
I was just curious, does it go all the way from Burbank Street down to Nichols, the sewer line?
It does, and it's all in relatively poor condition throughout that whole corridor. So we've got to do the two or three point repairs, and then we've got to line that section just to make sure it's done and won't be collapsed by Davenport's work out there.
That's great. Thank you, Nick. I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
Yes, we all do. Our next item under Other Businesses is Section 185, 181.15, Minor Zoning Change to Correct Error and Use Table for Banking and Financial Institutions. At what call could you pull that up?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
This is really a typo in the table of uses?
Yeah.
I think this is the old Dropbox, but I don't think, oh, yep, because it's gone. All right, let me go back to my inbox here. Here we go. Okay. And then we have other items, and we have...
Mike, would you mind reading the request?
Oh, I got it right here if you want.
And Tom's email.
Yeah, it says, Paul on Paul, this week we discovered an error in the use table that we have attributed to a BSC Scrivener's error. When the major zoning changes were made in April 2021, there was a typo when BSC submitted their final zoning ordinance for its reading. They initially mistakenly admitted medical treatment center slash facilities as a use. They instead changed the use codes for bank, financial agency, the next item in the use table, to match what medical treatment facilities should have been. See below in the final reading, we caught the omission of medical treatment facilities and added it in. What we did not catch, however, is the error was made on bank, financial agency. This, in effect, prohibits banks from sitting, citing almost anywhere except in a few rare cases with ZBA approval. It was never the intent of the board or the council to actively prohibit banks and financial agencies from moving into commercial spaces. It was overlooked because it was a typo and not examined closely because it was never an item discussed or deliberated during any of the zoning changes. I suggest this matter be resolved as part of the Scrivener's error. This was clear Scrivener's error. In this case, the planning board could submit the report to the council for it to get resolved at their first meeting in September. Please let me know what you think.
Yeah, open up the second one. There we go.
Yep.
So this is the change highlighted, how it should read.
Right, basically allowing banks in downtown business, in-town business, neighborhood business, commercial, industrial, and FSU.
So the procedure goes, they need the majority of the board to approve this to then go to council?
Actually, two-thirds. This is the language of Tom's Supreme Powers Amendment. This may, from time to time, be changed by amendment addition or repeal by the City Council in manner provided in MGL. The Director of Planning and Community Development may, with two-thirds approval of the planning board, update figures and photos, correct Scrivener's errors, table and figure numbers, capitalizations, correct street names, et cetera. Subject to the following expedited procedure for City Council approval, planning board transmit to the council a report of any clerical changes made, and then the council can act to approve that.
So five out of seven.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to recommend, considering this as Scrivener's error. I think that's how we're doing it. We're saying it's a Scrivener's error?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say opposed. Yeah, roll call, I guess. Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Good.
Perfect.
And not that you're being excluded, Tracy, but it's not a special permit.
Alex is in here.
Only special permit.
Only special permit.
Oh, right, 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 right. Yep.
No offense.
I'm trying to remember that.
That's right, that's right. That was my fault.
And then another item is MRPC appointment?
Who wants to be on MRPC?
Elin is presently?
Let's play that game.
I vote for Elin.
I'd just like to say, like, I'm able to attend, like, half of the meetings at most. I'm just letting, like, I'm putting it out there with my schedule, like, I did not get-
Fifty percent more I would go to.
All right, so I'm just, everyone's okay.
Well, I just found out, I guess I'm still on MJTC that I didn't really realize. So I'm like, oh, okay.
If everyone's okay with-
Continue on.
Yeah, I can continue if everyone's okay with, like, the fact that I do like-
Oh, we're very okay with that.
Whatever you can make of Elin would be awesome.
And we appreciate it.
Make a motion to continue the appointment.
For Elin?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Great. Great job, Elin.
And Elin will abstain from that.
Yeah, actually, was I supposed to abstain? And then there was an FYI about a public hearing on speedy, speedy something.
Yeah, it's their community outreach for speeding cannabis delivery.
Something that's not even allowed by the ordinance at this time.
This is Johnny Sanoco, and I don't know, in a separate move, maybe, that they portion off, there would be, well, this is discussion at one of the last meetings, right, when Attorney Phil, I'm forgetting.
Silverman.
Thank you. Always there representing Mr. Gander. So there's still the pending zoning change that the planning board recommended in favor of. That hasn't gone to the full council yet for a public hearing.
I'd still be very curious to see how the uses get separated. There's so seemingly unrelated uses that, yes, they both service cars, but they're two completely different things, I will say.
And how many vehicles?
Right, that are already stuffed on that lot to begin with.
Feeding cannabis is going to be, right, using and parked there.
That's the other thing, when they, because it's a special permit, we're going to have to look at how many cars they're permitted to have for their license versus how many have been there for every day I drive past it. We'll see. Nick, you're still on, I mentioned it last meeting, and I think you were gone, or, I don't know. I have mentioned a few times now. Do you know what the status is and why we haven't gotten the new sign up for the game on sign yet? The, I guess Mike or Tom had sent it to DPW, to have your sign people do the placard sign for the bottom of the game on sign?
Is this for the sign that's right at the intersection of Industrial and 2A?
It is. The new sign, yes.
I'm not sure what the holdup is there. I didn't realize that we were the holdup.
Well, so we had, when we, I don't know how much of this, I don't want to rehash too much of this. It's such a sensitive subject. But we left the bottom, we left one and a half spaces empty, and the bottom one we left empty intentionally, and we basically said, the only way to make sure that if in the future there's ever another tenant there, to keep the space safe is to make it a City of Pittsburgh sign, and then in the future, you know, 10, 20 years from now, if someone ever needs that, we can take it down. But instead of leaving a blank there, we told Game On we would handle it. And that was after negotiation back, it was after a lot of things. So basically, I know you weren't involved, but someone said, we'll send it to the sign guy, and that goes through DPW, and that's where that came from.
Can we take that out of the set aside money that they put aside, if we're going to create the sign?
We could. Oh, on that topic, have you settled on a number yet for the sidewalks for Game On?
So I have not settled on the sidewalk number. We're still in the process of putting together our paving and sidewalk bid. I'm extremely short-staffed, and that's kind of contributed to delays. I'm hoping to get that purchasing hands this week, but it's still going to be another month or so until we get bid prices back. So I'd rather wait until we get the bid prices to give you a firm number on that.
Definitely. I only ask you because I've been trying to, trying to figure out how much money is left over for other things that we could potentially use in that area like wayfinding side, because Paula just mentioned, could we use some of that $100,000 for this sign? I'm guessing you guys can just take care of it within your budget.
So what do we need to do for the sign? Is just putting City of Pittsburgh at the, in the bottom row of the?
Yeah, let me send you, let me send you what I, now, I will defer to the mayor's office, because this is better for them and PR. But I had, I did a mock-up back, a long time ago now, a year ago, maybe?
He did a simple, like, model of welcome to City of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, I used, so I used the, I used the sign in the background that we have with our welcome to Pittsburgh signs. I had taken it off there. But realistically, whatever you and the mayor's office decide, why can I not find my planning board folder?
I guess they'll know that there's a spot available. That would be on either side of the board.
Yeah, so I can coordinate, based on, based on what you sent, Paul, I'll take that. I'll coordinate with the mayor's office and make sure that they are putting up there what they want to see. And then I have no problem going to Was Arthur, who I think is the company that installed the sign and getting something made up. That's no problem.
They did not, they did not do the sign for Game On. Game On hired a company in Worcester.
Well, I'd be willing to bet Was Arthur will do a better job.
Oh, yes. I know Was Arthur can handle it. I'm just telling them they didn't do it. So let me know, if you, let the board know, if you, if it's going to cost a lot and you want, we want to take it out of that $100,000, we can. We, the board has control over that money. We just basically, we basically told Game On, don't worry about that portion, because we didn't know what the city would do. Whatever the, whatever you and the mayor's office decide, I don't care what it looks like. But it's the bottommost full placard, not the half placard that's blank. That's left purposely blank for the plumbing company if they so choose to be on there.
And then, realizing that you're still short-staffed, but even by next spring, whether or not that corner between Industrial and Westminster Street, the vegetation on the guide rail, you know, visibility piece there.
Yeah, I can get that taken care of this year. And just, just so the board is aware too, what we're trying to do right now is, I think a city councillor had submitted a petition to conduct a traffic study at the intersection of Game On, Victoria, and Roper. So we've hired one of our on-call consultants to take a look at that intersection and make some recommendations. And before we actually go to repave Industrial and Game On Way, I'd like to make sure we get those recommendations and incorporate whatever they suggest into the proposed design. So that, I believe, will be subject to change, and I'd like to give the board an opportunity to review those recommendations and comment on them.
We did get some feedback, another question from the residents about, you know, when parking signs or no parking signs are going to be installed. So I guess that could fall a part of the traffic study of, like, what other improvements or signage and aspects.
Yeah, that's another thing that we need to work on. That, kind of a separate track, we had gotten a quote from our guys that just priced out the signs that had been requested originally by the police department. And then there were a few tweaks that were being made, so we wanted to make sure that all gets settled before we actually ordered the signs and installed them. So as part of the, the whole process, I guess, between the intersection improvements, the paving, and the signage, you know, I'd expect signage to be handled by the end of the summer. And then I'm hoping the intersection improvements will, recommendations will be issued sometime in the next month or two, and we can, we can discuss that and then move forward from there.
And please keep in mind, like I said, whatever, whatever isn't directly volunteered by Game On, if you need to get reimbursed, the city needs to get reimbursed, just send it to us, and we have to start, we have yet to take anything out of that $100,000 off-site contribution amount. The only thing we have earmarked for that is the sidewalk, which I'm envisioning is going to be nowhere near $100,000.
Right. So sidewalk, I'd estimate ballpark to cost probably about $50 to $60K, depending on whether we go concrete, granite, or asphalt. I'd like to go concrete and granite personally, even if DPW has to pick up the difference in cost. The other thing that I'd like to get some funding for is ordering that signage. So once we finalize the signage with PD, I'll certainly come back to the board with the anticipated price, and hopefully we can, we can use those funds to cover the ordering of the signage.
Yeah, definitely, especially if you want to lump a whole bunch of things together. And, you know, if, whatever you think, if you think it should be concrete and granite, and that's where you want to do it, then give us the number, and like I said, we'll just-
I just like to have, I think, because we've had so many problems with Game On, there should be some money, even if it's not a lot, $5,000 or $10,000, that remains in that pool for shorter-term, you know, signage changes, things that we, once Game On has, you know, once they've, they've got all of their permit conditions satisfied, they're not going to be on the hook for any of these things. So we, you just need that money just in case to make sure that things are expedited quickly.
Okay, understood.
Thank you. Anybody else need more comments or communications?
No. I was going to say something, but I just realized I can't.
Okay.
No, no updates on that mess on Wayland Street?
Yes, I think, good question. There was some excavation work on that site on Wayland Street. There's just excavation work? There's no site plan or?
It was close to a year ago now, right? 10, 22?
Talking about Guido's?
Yeah, where the dumpster was. Yeah.
It's still crumbling.
Yeah, I don't know. We had a conceptual plan, a really rough plan submitted by an engineer. His name just went out of my head, but it was pretty rough. I mean, he knows that he, he was talking about residential year.
Six townhouses or a commercial trade building. The, right next to, across from Amico's, where they did the platform, they built, they cut into the hill, and they leveled it out. Now it's a U-shaped driveway that-
And it's kind of a falling.
Yeah, it's blocked off, and now there's rocks all over the place. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll contact Dave Sadowski, that was the engineer's name. Contact him, see what's up. Are you going to go forward with anything? Or, I think, quite some time ago, he submitted a form of intent to building, but then never followed up with anything.
I think, I think you probably, and you can follow up with community development, but I think that in the past, we've been pretty consistent that that should be a commercial property. You should convey that to him before he gets to our board.
Hmm.
Okay.
Underneath other communications, just, I just, I did forward to Mike maybe last week or so, just follow up on a couple of permit conditions for some permits we've issued in the past. One was 198 Water Street, which is a dark house on the corner where we had them through the parking lot across the street.
Across the street, right.
Yeah, because there was onsite parking space there that really isn't a space.
Today, there was a different car there parked on the sidewalk, not the one you took a picture. There was a different one today that was parked onto the sidewalk.
And it's, far, it's not large at all, so they take up half the sidewalk. And that's a very heavily trafficked pedestrian sidewalk for the market basket and everything, down to the plazas, shopping plazas there, so.
I mean, that's a traffic enforcement issue. They should just get ticketed.
Can be addressed, or that we have to bring them back, not adhering to the plan, you know, it was like-
It's a new owner now? They sold the building, the guy that we dealt with before?
Oh, that's probably why.
Yeah, it's a new owner now.
He's put a no parking sign there and reiterate that has to be across the street. And he also mentioned that if there's any other work to be done in that area at some point, that remove the curb cut so that it's not, doesn't look like a driveway.
Know what I have to check too? I don't know if you knew, if you know this, but that property, they originally had that parking lot listed separately.
Oh, really?
I don't know if it's sold to the same person, but this goes back a ways. I think it was before they striped it and everything, but they originally had it listed separately. I'm assuming, because it was a special permit, that it's sold, but I don't know that for a fact, so maybe we should look into that, too.
We can check it out.
Because no one's ever parked there.
I've seen people-
But are they cars that are using it? I don't think, are they cars that are using?
I don't know.
Okay.
It could be folks who just bought the parking lot.
Right.
I only, I drove past there twice after Paul sent that email. I didn't see anyone there.
And then there was another location on Mount Elon Road where there was a stone wall removal, but it looks like there's a lot more stone wall removed than what was to be granted, so. Like, we'll take a look at that.
What about Steve Senna? Did you talk to him?
Yeah, talked to his engineer. I'll give him no call.
Did he give Wes permission to do the work that he had to do?
As far as I know, no. I'll contact about a couple of different projects he has going on.
Well, that's part of why I say that. We have a few things, like, hey, what's going on on Mount Elon Road, too? I'm curious that, I haven't been there in a couple of weeks, but before I left on vacation, we talked about it six, eight weeks ago. They hadn't done anything in a couple of months, so, curious.
All right. I think that's, anybody else have anything else for communication?
Did you, I know what email I was going to ask. I told you I sent you a few emails. Did you see the email from Kent Burgel about, Mike, you saw that, right, the seventh day event?
There's nothing to be said.
I know, I'm just saying, you saw it. I just want to make sure you saw it.
Yes, it was after the hearing, so.
I understand, and I even told him that, that we already made the decision. I would pass it along. I just want you to know that you saw it. Okay.
We did.
Yep. How was it?
So I got that.
Okay.
I know I've been away for a little while, so I was trying to follow up on all the emails and other aspects. I know there was something else for Game On about refrigerator, no refrigerator, temporary outside.
Oh, yeah, he said, oh, no, you got that email. It was the one-
Oh, yeah, he said, oh, oh, you got that email, it was the one about the PFAS that...
No, not PFAS, it has to do with outside.
But it was in that, it was in that email where he said, and by the way, they, they're still using the temporary refrigerator.
Yeah, I noticed that the other night, yeah.
Containers.
So...
Send Peter an email and just say, hey, you said they were temporary, what's the deal?
It's for the, right, so it's for the community development office, you know, building commissioner to follow up on the permit conditions.
Oh, that's right, I was telling him, yeah, I was telling him to send an email and just let them know.
I wanna get you off the hook.
I'm not emailing him.
I know.
Heck with that, I'm done with that, this is, this is community development from here on in.
So I wanna, yeah, so whenever you're getting...
Thank you. Oh, I, Mike, I noticed, John's good enough, John emails me and Mike, and I know you see it, so that's, that's the extent of it.
Yeah, so if you're just, yeah, if you're getting, like, individual things, forward them along to the department.
No, actually, Game On's been very quiet, I, aside from that email from John the other day, I haven't heard anything in two months, so...
Has anyone gone extra?
And the water quality stuff at Victoria, but that has nothing to do with Game On, so that's all I've been getting.
All right, and we didn't have any minutes from the last one yet?
Yeah, not quite.
So we don't have that. And I know you forwarded me some decisions, so I have to, I'm gonna work on those.
And I have them here too, on a thumb drive and paper copy.
Okay.